If we may, we all stand in honor of America by saluting our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, if you please call the roll.
Mr. Lady. Mr. Larry.
Here.
Ms. Martin.
Here.
Mayor Caulfield.
Here.
Mr. Conway.
Here.
Ms. Dougherty.
Here.
Ms. Fatacante.
Here.
Seven present.
Thank you. I understand we have people who want to come to the podium and speak about the budget or speak about your school or speak about a certain subject. And if there are people, we have an enormous agenda before us this evening. If there are many people who want to speak on the same subject, could you just please choose a spokesman? Or keep your comments to two minutes, three minutes at the most. We don't want to turn anyone away. This is the democracy we cherish. And with that said, if anyone would like to come to the podium and offer your comments on the budget, but please keep your comments to at least three minutes or less. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the school committee, Madam Superintendent, my name is Jerry Frichette. I live at eighty Dunbar Ave. And the reason I'm here this evening is to speak on the proposed cuts for the dance program in the Fine Arts Academy. I'm a proud graduate of Lowell High School, class of nineteen eighty. My oldest daughter, Marissa, graduated last year from Lowell High School. She graduated from the Latin Lyceum Program, spent four years in the band, was in the National Honor Society both her junior and senior year. My youngest daughter, Stacy, is a freshman. She is an honest student, taking honest classes. She's in the top six percent of her class. She is a serious student. She's currently in dance and she is slated to go into the Fine Arts Academy next year with a concentration in dance. She will tell you this evening what dance means to her, but I want you to understand she's a serious student. And dance in the arts is part of the development of a person and a student and how important it is to the city, how important it is to students that are in the program. The fine arts, as it relates to this city, epitomizes what this city is all about. And as you look at that program, and I attended, my wife and I attended the recitals this year. And when you look at the ethnic diversity in that program and the amount of kids that are in that program, it really reflects what this city is all about. And I would ask you, as you take a look at the cuts that you have to make, and you have some difficult choices, and I certainly respect the difficult decision that you have in looking at the budget and trying to figure out what you can do and where you need to make the cuts. What I'm really asking you is to really try to make the cuts with the hands of a surgeon. It is so important. It's one thing to dilute a program to a point where it exists, but it's functioning at less than full capacity. It's another thing to eliminate a program entirely. And that's exactly what is being proposed here, is to eliminate it entirely. And it's important not to eliminate it from the Fine Arts Academy. It's very difficult, especially for a serious student, to include that in their curriculum and have it be a weighted class. It's very difficult to fill that schedule and not have that be a weighted class. So I think it's important, please understand that. And to further dilute the Fine Arts Academy and what that brings to this school, we're an urban high school. We have fought very, very hard to be respected throughout this state as an urban high school. As a parent and as a graduate of the high school, I can tell you, I defend this school constantly with people that send their children to parochial schools in this city and they just shudder at the fact of possibly sending their child to Lowell High School. That's awful. And you people here in this room have fought very hard to change that over the years. And I would hate to see in an effort to make cuts is we start to take away what makes this a special school. So as you deliberate here this evening and you look at the numbers, and I understand, you know, it's been reported and the terminology that you've looked at, and I believe it's somewhere on a hundred and sixty-eight seats that would be transferred to gym if this program is eliminated.
Mr. Frichette, there's a lot of other people.
Absolutely, yep. What that will do for the gym program, what it will do to dilute the Fine Arts Academy. So I would ask you to please consider this when you're taking your votes. And my daughter will speak as to what it means to her. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other people who want to talk on the fine arts? Please keep your comments. I think Mr. Frichette did an excellent job presenting his case, but if you can just keep our comments at two minutes. Thank you.
My name is Stacy Frichette. I live at eighty Dunbar Ave. I am here tonight to give a student's perspective. I'm a freshman, soon to be a sophomore at Lowell High School and will conclude my first year at Lowell High School in the dance program. I am proud to say I was on the dance ensemble this year. I stopped taking private dance lessons so I would have more time and energy to focus on dance at high school. I get accepted into the Fine Arts Academy next year for dance. Being in the academy, I'll be able to be more involved in dance. I want to experience the pride that comes from choreographing my own dances and seeing them be performed. I want to have four years of dance at high school on my college resume. And most importantly, I want to dance. For me and for many other students, dance isn't just an elective at school. It's a passion. I hope that my dance experience I get from Lowell High School will help me when I continue my dancing in college and beyond. After college, I hope to own my dance studio and my own dance studio and maybe choreograph for Broadway. Dance has helped me meet students that share the same passion as me. I love to dance and everyone I dance with. But now there is a possibility that dance will be taken away, not only from me, but from every other student who comes into Lowell with the passion and desire for dance. I hope that you will consider how important this program is to students and give us the opportunity to continue with it for many more years. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address another subject matter up in the hallway?
Mr. Mayor, committee members, my name is Michael Arway. I'm a senior Latin teacher at Lowell High School. Thank you for this opportunity. To borrow from Shakespeare, I come to praise Latin, not to bury it. I've heard the comments and complaints.
Could you speak right into that microphone, sir?
Sorry. My best line? "To borrow from Shakespeare, I come to praise Latin, not to bury it. I've heard the comments and complaints many times before. Latin is a dead language. No one speaks it. What's the point?" Well, this is the point. Because of exposure to Latin vocabulary, a vocabulary that seventy percent of English is derived from, nationally, students of Latin continuously and consistently outperform other students on their SAT exams. Because of the study of the classics, nationally, students of Latin consistently have the highest verbal scores on the GRE exams. Because of their study of grammar, Latin students at Lowell High actually know a participle from a gerund, a conditional clause from a relative clause, and are able to use that knowledge, which increasingly is not taught anywhere else, to become better speakers and better writers, whether it's writers of novels, writers of grant proposals, or writers of business plans. Although I don't wish to take anything away from the other dedicated teachers at Lowell High, I think at least in part because of the Latin studies, fifty percent of the Carney Medal winners over the past five years have been Latin students and are studying at places like Dartmouth, Brown, MIT, Yale, and Harvard. Because of the cultural and mythological studies that are an integral part of our early Latin curriculum, our Latin students learn medical and legal terminology and know that the real deal is not that West Side Story was stolen from Shakespeare, but that Shakespeare stole it from mythology. And because of the literary readings that are now part of the later Latin curriculum, the Latin students at Lowell High have a much greater appreciation and understanding of politics and war, love, and death, and know that these issues are something that mankind has been trying to figure out for centuries. When I arrived here in the fall of two thousand and two, there were three levels of Latin being taught, none of which involved the reading of original texts. Since then, we have almost doubled the enrollment in Latin and teach it on six levels. We have revived the Latin AP program. Since they started taking the exam in two thousand and five, twenty students have taken the test and over half of their scores have been either a four or a five, the highest possible score. And whereas in two thousand and two, I had five juniors and no seniors in upper-level Latin, this year, we had a total of thirty-one students, reading everything from Virgils I need to Cicero's Orations to Tacitus to Pliny, and all read in the original Latin, in the very Latin words composed and written by those great authors two thousand years ago. And that is what you are considering ending at Lowell High. I know the Latin program is small compared to many at the school. I realize it may look like a nice tidy way to make a budget cut, just find something small and cut it out completely. But the study of Latin has been an integral part of Lowell High School since its founding in eighteen thirty-one. Interest in Latin is growing, not declining. Enrollment in Latin has increased almost every year since two thousand and two. We all know we need to do more with less, but to eliminate the Latin program at Lowell High would be a great disservice to the very students whose interests it is your job to protect. Do the right thing. Let Latin live. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Vishal Atri and I'm currently a junior at Lowell High School, taking Latin as well. And I thank you all for being here today and I thank you all for listening to my grievance. By removing Latin from Lowell High School, we are not only removing one of the greatest vestiges of what public education has to offer, but are also thwarting the development of the key instrument of an elite education, which is critical to our progress. Instead, we should continue to honor and venerate this ancient language by allowing it to echo through the halls of our school perpetually. Latin is just a pebble in the quarry of educational pursuits, but it is that insignificant pebble that holds up the massive boulders of math, science, English, and history. Although I completely endorse the amelioration of the city's fiscal deficit, I strongly believe that it should not come at the expense of the valuable programs offered at LHS. We, as a community, must not allow these economic hardships dictate the quality of education we offer. And although many of us believe that Latin might be a dead language, it still lives with all of us today. Thank you very much for your time.
My name is Joel Rock. I live at one sixty-two Florence Road. There's just one major point I would like to add about the importance of Latin. As a junior city school, we have a lot of trouble bringing English as a second language learners up to level with the students who have English as a primary language. Now, studies show that students who are taught Latin have a better understanding of English, have a better cultural awareness, have greater self-esteem than those who don't understand English as well. That's why many inner cities districts around the country are either improving and adding on to the Latin programs or initiating new ones. This is why it's an important idea to keep Latin at Lowell High School. Thank you.
My name is Johanna Zachara. I'm a Latin student and a Latin Lyceum program student at Lowell High School. Today in class, my Latin teacher, Mr. Arway, was going over some translations we did a while back. What was so remarkable about this was that he was reading the Latin with his eyes, translating it in his head, and speaking it to us in English in the amount of time it takes me to read straight English aloud. For those of you who know Latin, you know that what Mr. Arway did today was no easy feat. On my first day of Latin I won, Mr. Reardon told us that we could call ourselves Latin scholars. I would love to be able to claim that title for my final two years at LHS. I want many future generations of Latin students to be able to claim that title. I love the way the words fit together like a puzzle that must be translated before it can be put together. I love speaking with my grandfather over the phone about passages of the classics that he memorized during his time as a Latin student and still knows by heart. Many people write Latin off as a dead language. I hope you can help us to keep it alive.
Good evening. My name is Alexandra Hadam. I graduated from Lowell High School in two thousand and eight. I'm a rising sophomore at Wellesley College. Tonight, I speak in defense of Lowell High School's Latin program. When I heard about the proposed budget cuts earlier today, I was completely shocked and appalled. My first thoughts went to the livelihood of the students in the Latin Lyceum. A Lyceum graduate myself, I understand how important Latin is to this very special exam school. Quoted from the program's mission statement, "The Lyceum emphasizes a classical education, providing an interdisciplinary foundation and context for the current learning." The mission statement goes on to highlight its abilities to give an aesthetic appreciation and the Latin language courses emphasize aesthetic elements of the relevant language, history, and culture. While I understand students can gain an aesthetic appreciation for subjects from others' foreign languages without Latin, I see no other alternative as exceeding as much as Latin can. Latin has given me a basis of understanding I do not think I could have received from any other subject at Lowell High School. I know Latin is not for everyone and that there are many other languages I could have learned, but Latin is the language for me and I know I am not alone in that. Tonight, let's remember the poster that has long hung in Mr. Arway's classroom that says, "Latin is more than a language." Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Andrew Howe. I'm a rising sophomore at Harvard University. I was a member of the LHS class of two thousand and eight and I took Latin for four years. I just wish to make two points. The first is that Latin was by far the best preparation for college of any course I took in high school. The rigor and the amount of homework and the high standard we were held to was very good preparation for the rigors of college. The second is that we're having this meeting because of an economic collapse. And I think that there's been a realization that we need stronger liberal arts programs to prevent something like this from happening again. Latin fits liberal arts programs perfectly. To question Latin is to question the value of Latin is to question the value of liberal arts because Latin provides a basis for understanding our culture, our philosophy, our system of justice that is very hard to find elsewhere. So I ask you, for the benefit of future Lowell High scholars, to please not cut Latin. Thank you.
My name is Michael Winward. I am an alumnus of Lowell High School, member of the first graduating class of the Latin Lyceum, but more distinctly a product of the dance program. I received my BA in Liberal Arts with a focus in dance from Bennington College during each of those four years of study, returning to Lowell High as a guest choreographer. Three weeks ago, I came back from Austria where I had been dancing professionally. The friends and colleagues I have in Europe find it curious that I received my degree in Liberal Arts with a focus in dance, that I was encouraged during college to integrate my primary study of dance with my studies of literature, history, science, theater, and music. They find it even more curious when I talk about the similarly cross-disciplinary experiences I had during high school. "Where exactly do you come from?" they ask me, "A place there is obviously a lot to like about," I say. I understand that one man's opinion may not mean much in such trying financial times, but considering the direction it set me in, I feel it my responsibility to speak up on behalf of Lowell High Dance Program. Over the past ten years, I have either witnessed or participated in such endeavors as: A tribute to the Merrimack Mills, the comprehensive research project which culminated in a series of dance performances inside historic area mill buildings, a staged interpretation of Franz Kafka's The Metamorphosis, and countless collaborative efforts with the band members, the visual arts students, and among the dancers themselves. Offhand, I can think of few other fields of study at the high school in which this kind of cooperative exchange has been so consistently initiated and undertaken. It certainly doesn't happen in gym class. Now, I don't have any problem with gym class, mainly because I never had to take it. But I do find it satisfying that when I was in high school, my friends who did like taking gym class would come to see my dance performances and I would come to see their sporting events. Here, we had kids of entirely different temperaments working to demystify their somewhat hazy perceptions of one another's interests. Here, we had a kind of cooperative exchange that nobody ever spoke about or even recognized was happening. Here, we had a delicate dialectic response to those tired old notions of jock versus freak. I believe that cutting the one dance teacher position at the high school while keeping the several phys ed teacher positions would not only amount to an ideological affront, it would halt the inestimable, though ineffable, effects that a more diverse curriculum engenders. It can be difficult to explain why teaching kids how to choreograph is as worthwhile and enterprise as it is. It should be noted that the term choreography has taken on some expansive applications in recent history. We may define it as the act of making dances. We may define it as a process of creative decision-making. We may define it as a means of negotiating the world around us. Figuring out how to make the history of the Merrimack Mills come alive onstage in dance while ensuring that your students learn a lot in the process is in itself a choreographic action. It is the project of a choreographic mind. When one's body is one's instrument, one develops an appreciation for holistic approaches. Health, for example, is not taught by wave, now dated food pyramid. It is taught by wave.
You're almost finished.
Okay, last statement is that to cut the dance program at Lowell High would mean cutting a program that hasn't has demonstrated an incredible potential to educate creatively. It would mean narrowing the options of a clearly diverse student body and it would mean a flat-out dismissal of the conviction that art is the handmaid of human good, a conviction I am reminded about with astonishing frequency by my trash can. Thank you.
My name is Steve Anstey. I'm from two thirty-one Mount Hope Street and I am the proud parent of two Latin Lyceum students. And I also took four years of Latin. I'm not going to talk to you about the improved test scores, the roots of art and law, myths, fables, literature, or the fact that English as a second language students have remarkably better scores if they take Latin as well. I'm going to tell you that many people make the mistake that they think that thinking comes before language, but it is not actually completely true. If you want to think differently, the language matters. What languages you speak change how you think. These students that take Latin are thinking differently and going to better schools and doing better tests because they think differently and we can't crush that. And another thing I want to point out is that it is a unique program that you cannot lose. French and Spanish, cut one of them because Latin is the only option for the tongue impaired. I absolutely couldn't speak other languages, but Latin gave me an option going into college that requires you of three years of a language. I would have died in any language I had to speak. Latin gave me an out. So that's all I wanted to say about that. Thank you very much.
Before we continue, how many more people want to address the committee on the subject of Latin?
The Lyceum.
Okay. Okay, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Allison Laraba. I live at one sixteen Featherston Ave. I am the parent of a freshman in the Latin Lyceum. I certainly cannot speak any better than the students who came before me spoke about their experience in the Latin Lyceum, but I will speak as the parent of a student. As a parent who's been involved in my students' schools from the time he was in kindergarten and even today, one of my biggest complaints has always been that for those children who come to some of this information easily, we, as a school department, do not challenge them enough. I have repeated that often and often. I went to psych council meetings. I went to PTO meetings. I was officers in PTOs. And if I was to have one thing about our failing of our system, it would be that the children who get it are not being challenged because we're spending a lot of time and energy on the kids who need the help. I don't say that we shouldn't help those kids, but we need to do better by our kids who do get it and need that little bit of extra challenge. The Latin Lyceum is touted as a rigorous curriculum program. It is touted as a small collection of students who work together and challenge one another and the material that they are dealing with is a higher caliber for these kids to challenge them. And you have kids who are of like minds, who are challenging each other because, wow, I know this. What do you know and everything else? I will say honestly that my son got knocked on his tail because he did not have study skills. It came very easily to him in middle school. He breezed through it. He would do homework in school. He was not challenged. So it was a big comeuppance to him to go into the Latin Lyceum. Having said that, the Latin Lyceum teachers worked with him. His Latin teacher met with him regularly. His biology teacher met with him regularly. His algebra teacher helped him out and set him in the right direction and brought him where he needs to be. I can't speak enough about that. Clearly, we can't speak enough about the Latin teachers who have inspired such a dedication from their students for their language. I do not envy your position. I do not envy your choices, but please do not cut the legs out of the Latin Lyceum program. This is a program that you've spent ten years building up. This is a program that has a reputation. I'll be very frank. I brought my son to Phillips Exeter for interviews, Phillips Andover and Governors Academy. All three of the admission officers at those schools had heard of the Latin Lyceum and all three of them, in the conversation with the parent one-on-one, said it is a wonderful program on par with what we have to offer for you. So if you have that kind of reputation, I implore you not to cut the legs out of the program by taking out Latin. I'm not telling you to take another language out because obviously everybody feels strongly about their language, but we have spent so much time trying to build up this program that it would be a shame to cut the legs out from it. And on a final note, this committee has thought very highly of Mr. Samaras over the years, so much so that you let him come back from a retirement statement. If he's saying to you, this is what he can do for his school, I ask you to please realize that you have great respect for this person. You've asked him to stay on and follow his recommendations because he's the man on the scene. He's the one that's at the high school every day and he best knows his administration. But thank you very much for your time.
The chair will entertain one more speaker for the Latin Lyceum. One more speaker for the Latin. One more.
Though I have nothing written and I planned just to stand up and clap for all those who spoke and defended Latin today, I feel I'd like to close things off and just tell all of you from the bottom of my heart about the favorite class I ever took in my life. And I'm a student at UMass Lowell now. I'm the co-president of PSYCHI, the Psychology Honor Society. And through every scholarly trial and tribulation, I undertook all the tests. Nothing has stood in my mind like the Latin roots and the help it gives you in any test in life, ladies and gentlemen. Latin, if Latin dies from Lowell High School, all those students like Mrs. Laraba, that their parents take them to Phillips Exeter, you know, Notre Dame, Bishop Gerton, that's where they're going to end up going. And Latin makes Lowell High not just another public high school. And as a Lyceum graduate, I do hope that Latin can remain there for many years and I hope I can send my children there. Thank you so much.
We have had twelve speakers come to the podium. Are there any other speakers on various subjects? Mr. Samaras? And please keep your comments, please, three minutes or less because the agenda that we have before us this evening is...
I understand that, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. All right, tonight, we're again addressing issues of cuts at Lowell High School. And can you understand clearly why I'm so proud of the students at Lowell High School and the parent support? That's what it's all about. And I know you know that. I don't have to tell you that. But the past month, we've been asked to cut two point five million dollars from the high school, which is about twenty-nine to thirty percent of the present budget cuts. We've made cuts with the family consumer science department head, seven teachers, based on the attendance policy and one statistician. We've been asked to deal with the student-teacher ratio and a ratio as high as one to twenty-five. But in meeting with the superintendent and her staff, we were able to convince the superintendent and everyone that if we went to a one to twenty-five, it would be devastating to Lowell High School. We couldn't survive. And I believe that by going to the one to twenty-one, it's going to be difficult to meet all the needs that you've heard tonight, such as the Latin and dance. But with the one to twenty-one ratio, it's possibly doable, but it's going to be stressful at best. Secondly, we were asked by the subcommittee in the high school to cut four hundred thousand dollars more from the budget. Now, one interpretation was that we go from the two point five million, three hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, add another four hundred thirty-one thousand dollars of Unit B cuts, and make it up to two million, six hundred and ninety thousand dollars. We can't do that. That would devastate the high school. If this cut, the Unit B cuts, are in place of other cuts that have been suggested, my issue here that I'm worried about changing the structural and academic integrity of the high school, that's my issue. I do not want to lose teachers, but if I have to make some decisions as headmaster and looking at this very carefully, the one area that I gave you the cuts today, you have a report from me about the second layer of administrative cuts. We've already made three hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars administrative cuts and now it's for the second layer. And this second layer, I strongly believe, has been part of the entire process. Here's what I'm concerned about. The dropout rate was just released from the State Department of Education. Lowell High School or the city of Lowell, one of seventeen urban communities, is two point four percent, the lowest dropout rate of any urban committee. The attendance rate is meeting state needs. The retention rate is meeting state needs. Our failure rate has gone from freshman academy of forty-nine percent to fifty-one percent, down to fifteen percent, and we haven't watered down our programs. So basically, you have a hard decision to make, but the thing is, I need to have my team in place. And if I were to cut this next layer of administrators, I believe that all the good that we've done, working with teachers, working with parents, working with students, will just come apart. just come apart. And I know the one thing is, everybody has an idea on how to cut this budget. There are no easy answers. There are no easy answers. But I would hope that you have trust in me at this particular point to say, okay, hold off this next layer of cutting counselors, cutting support staff for the freshman academy, instructional specialists. I need these people, they all have well-placed jobs and do a wonderful job. I would just simply say that I would look and hope that if this budget were to straighten out and if there's any added money, I would ask that some of the teachers be returned, the high school be considered for the return of some of the staffs. I know you have a hard decision to make. The people that are here tonight are not here, I know, to say you're doing anything wrong. They're here to say that they're proud of their high school, they're proud of programs that they've been in, whether it's the freshman academy, whether it's Latin, whether it's the crew team, whatever you want to talk about. The support that they get from teachers, administrators, counselors, it's an integral part of the school. So what I've been trying to do, one of the parents made, you know, do some surgical movements. That's what I'm trying to do. I don't want to gut out the high school. I want, what I would need to do is make some surgical cuts that hopefully will not endanger our high school, our accreditation, our standing within the community. You here have fought too hard and have made so many demands on me and my staff to ensure attendance rate is taken care of, toddies are taken care of, dropout rate is taken care of. While I promised you several years ago, especially on the dropout rate, we were working on it and we'd become successful with the best in the state, not by Bill Samaras standards or any standards at Lowell High School, by the state. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Sharon Gallagher from the Friends of Lowell High School, here with many of my members and colleagues in the committee. And I'm here to remind you once again to please protect the quality of education at the high school and the accreditation because it has community-wide ripple effect. Specifically, I ask you to really think about that guidance department and how well it supports all of our students, especially our first-generation students who are going to college. I also ask you to really be careful about administrative cuts, and as Mr. Samaras just said, he's got a great team in place, and they're already supervising thirty to forty teachers each. Even reducing the twelve to twenty-five teachers is not going to change any one of those department heads' teaching loads significantly. We had a meeting of the Friends, our monthly meeting, on Monday night, and as this topic came up, I asked the parents who were there, and there were thirty to forty people there, how many people felt that they had a teacher or had experienced, their child had a teacher that was either substandard or needed improvement, needed some better supervision, and two-thirds of the hands went up. Now, of course, that doesn't mean two-thirds of the teachers are lousy, it just means that people have had a bad experience somewhere along the way. And it's our department heads that work with those teachers, that document the performance and ask, work with the teachers to get better, and if not, they encourage them to find another place to work because they're just not good enough for the Lowell High standards. So if we don't have the department heads, we won't have that kind of quality control. And we've had a number of retirements on the teaching side for the, over the past several years, so we have a lot of brand-new teachers that need that mentoring, that guidance from their superiors, their department heads, in teaching strategies as well as content delivery. And just to harken back to one of my sons with some of the former administrators that were in place, my son had a problem with a particular teacher, and the number of assignments that she was giving, giving out compared to other teachers teaching the exact same subject. And I talked to the housemaster about it, and I talked to the department head about it, and both of them said, we know she's a problem, there's nothing we can do. And that just was so unsatisfactory to me as a parent, to hear that people were looking the other way about a teacher that basically wasn't complying with good teaching practices. Now, we have a different set of administrators that are working very closely with those teachers, and we want to make sure that we keep quality in the classroom, the class size as well as the quality at the podium. So please, again, think carefully before you wield that knife, and we hope that we'll continue having a strong high school. Thank you.
Charles Karagianis, eighty-four Beach Street in Lowell. Mr. Mayor, Mayor Caulfield, Superintendent Scott, members of the school committee, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm going to truncate my original remarks, given the number of people speaking. Since this is a budget hearing tonight, I'd like to talk dollars. Mr. Samaras just mentioned the dropout rate at the high school, the reduction to two-and-a-half percent. We're now on a par with wealthy suburban districts when it comes to our dropout rate. We're leading the state for urban districts. That translates into real dollar savings. Repeater sections are tremendously reduced at the high school. At the freshman academy alone, more than 200 fewer students are going to take repeater courses than would be expected had we not changed the structure of Lowell High School. Two hundred fewer students taking repeater sections translates into four, five, six fewer teaching positions that are needed for repeater sections. That's a quarter million dollars or more right there. When you add in upperclassmen who are not taking repeater sections, that's got to be a quarter million dollars more. When you look at students who are graduating in cycle of four years rather than five years, let's face it, a four-year education is about $40,000 for a student. A five-year education is about $50,000. If only fifty students per year maintain their sequence, that's a half a million dollars of additional savings to the taxpayers. Along with the repeater courses, that's $1 million in savings. We're not just looking at fiscal ten, we're looking at fiscal eleven as well. You gut some of the programs at Lowell High School. If you reduce the structural integrity of the administrative unit, you will be paying dollars, not saving dollars, by cutting administrators at Lowell High School. What do administrators do? It's sort of a term that keeps getting thrown out every couple weeks, the administrators. The administrators throughout the district are the problem solvers who are tasked with handling our most challenging students, our most difficult logistical problems. That's what we do. Concretely, what do administrators do? Here's a case in point, it's the one I'm familiar with, I work at the freshman academy. This school year, we have met face-to-face with more than 3,000 students with a disciplinary or consequence action as a result. We have met with scheduled parent meetings, more than 1,100. Our social worker has dealt with more than 700 significant issues. Our guidance counselors at the freshman academy have met with more than 5,000 students. That is 10,000 family and student direct interactions by administrators at the freshman academy. That doesn't include phone calls home or to agencies, that doesn't include drop-in parents who come in to check in on their students, that doesn't include meetings that just suddenly crop up related to student issues. If you added in those phone calls and unexpected parent and student interactions, easily more than 20,000 administrator interactions with parents and students at the freshman academy, a single unit at Lowell High School. And I cite this unit not just because it's the freshman academy, because that's what administrators do across the district. They are regularly meeting with parents, they're regularly meeting with students. And if these cuts that are proposed tonight at the second tier, as Mr. Samaras mentioned, are put into place, the structural integrity of Lowell High School will be utterly compromised, and you will be paying money in fiscal eleven. You will not be saving money. Thank you very much.
Ma'am, what subject do you want to speak on?
Lowell High Freshman Academy.
How many more speakers do we have in Lowell High School freshman academy? Okay, three minutes, please.
My name is Helen Quinlan Littlefield, I live at 249 Douglas Road. I graduated from Lowell High, some of my former students are here. I've been teaching freshmen completely solely since 1994. I've been with the freshman academy, the cluster program that began then, and I've been with the freshman academy since 2004 in its inception. And I can tell you that these past four years, begun under Jim DiProffio, and now being carried out with Janine Durkin and the rest of her staff, have been the best four years. And I consider myself a freshman expert, having had them for so long. These people are passionate about freshmen, and freshmen are notoriously high maintenance. Go ahead, ask them of our upper-level teachers, they don't want to come near them. These are people who want to work with them. And you've heard Mr. Karagianis's statistics, and I can back that up. My job is easier and more effective because I have the support of the staff there, the discipline specialist, Mrs. Durkin, the guidance, excuse me, the guidance counselors and the social service staff. And it would be, you'd be gutting it and making it much more or less effective to do that, make those cuts.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sixteen, sixteen.
My name is Donna Newcomb, I'm also a staff member at the freshman academy. Thank you for your time, patience, and understanding tonight. I know the decisions that you have to make regarding budget issues, cuts and reductions in services, are not ones that you will make easily or take lightly. I know that the situation you face is not unique to Lowell. And my own town has been forced to make some of the very difficult decisions that you have had to make over the last several years. Since around 2004, I have seen members of the Lowell School Committee at the State House for rallies, at budget hearings, and in state representatives' offices, looking, advocating for increased local aid, Chapter 70 reform, and a better understanding of the many issues that school systems face today. I know you know the statistics. I know you know the issues, I know you know the facts. I'm here to talk about the perspective at an urban classroom teacher. I've had a fair number of years, twenty-one, in teaching. My prior experience was in private special education. Education's changed a lot, a lot in the last twenty-one years, and the amount of issues the kids have to face on a day-to-day basis is staggering. I would love to focus solely on content, methodology, and instructional practices. If I could do that, it would mean that none of my kids were coming to school hungry. They weren't coming to school neglected or abused, or from broken or disadvantaged homes. My money could be spent on curriculum materials instead of food, or a new pair of shoes, or alarm clocks, or bus passes. Some days, many days, I think the biggest thing that we have to offer those kids is hope. There is no way that this can be an individual effort, it is a total team effort at the freshman academy, from the administrators to the staff, teachers, guidance counselors, support staff, custodians, lunch staff, everyone. It takes every single one of us to provide a safety net that would catch kids who would otherwise fall. If you start cutting away at that safety net, many kids will fall. Please, no kids want to fail. Give us the staff that they need to have to be hopeful and to be successful. Thank you.
We have had sixteen speakers come to the podium, and is there one speaker that wants to speak in the freshman academy, and this will be, what?
I would like to speak in K-8.
K-8?
Kentigan's degree.
I know what it is, but...
Edith Lebran, 200 Market Street, I'm the principal of the Sullivan Middle School. I do not envy the position of the school committee as you are looking at what you do have to cut, because if you change any of the cuts that are before you this evening, something else has to replace it. I wish we could win a lottery, and we would have enough money to buy everything that our children need. But I know as a principal who has to provide intervention for children who come into my fifth grade, who are reading at a first-grade level, who cannot tell you the sound that a letter has, they can tell you its name, but not its sound. When I have children sitting in front of my teachers, who when they count objects, they don't see them as a collection that makes three, if they ask them to give me three, they will pick up the third item I have named because they still don't have that number sense. I wish I could say that my job and my colleagues in the elementary school have an easy one. We would love to come forward and say all the things that we need and want. And listening to the high school students speak really warms my heart. These children are bright, they are articulate, we are sending them to you. Please, as you're looking at these cuts that you have to make at the high school, to make sure that you look that nothing else gets passed back to K-8 in terms of cuts, because we have nothing else to offer. I think that closing the Rogers School certainly took a big piece out of the budget, it's increasing our class sizes to about 25 to 27. We will do the same fine job that we are doing in our elementary and middle schools with 27 children in a class as we've been doing with 23 or 24. But please make sure that as you look at the cuts you're having to make tonight, and that everyone at the high school understands that these cuts are not being made by you easily, and they're not being looked at easily by any of us in the K-8 level either. So I applaud whatever efforts you have tonight, and go forward and do your best. Thank you.
On behalf of the school committee and the administration, Superintendent of Schools Chris Scott and her administration, I personally want to thank everyone who came to the podium, and especially those who couldn't, and who are here because you believe in the cause. Many speakers have come to that podium and said, we don't relish the job that's before you. And you know what? They're right. I don't relish it, neither does my colleagues. We have a difficult task before us. And Chapter 70 money, we don't even know where we stand with that at the state. We understand it's going to be cut 2%, 2.4 million dollars. Local aid is going to be cut, $17 million overall. The city received, the counselors received their budget last night, and we had to lay off 48 employees on the city side of government. It is not easy. I've been here 22 years, and this is the worst dilemma that I've gone through. It's not easy. But I assure you, this committee, this mayor, this superintendent and her administration will do everything humanly possible to keep that classroom teacher in the classroom and provide the education your child deserves and expects. So thank you for being here, and with that said, we have to move on with the agenda. And you're welcome to stay. Thank you very much. Mr. Conway, did you have, you wanted to have an opening statement?
Just very quickly, Mr. Mayor, I thank you for that. I think that, as you explained perfectly clear, that this is a very difficult time. And I was thinking about it today, and I'm sure all my colleagues have certainly have been spending many, many sleepless hours trying to consider the most logical moves, and they're very difficult. If you sit here tonight and you listen to each one of those speakers, they obviously have a great argument to keep a teacher or a program in place. And again, it is not going to be, it's not going to be an easy job. I would like to say that, keeping all that in mind, the school committee is obviously going to make decisions that members are not going to like, motions that I might make or one of my other colleagues might make. And I think that, once again, I think that we're trying to do the best we can, and I think that we have to look at this, like I'm sure we will, in a very professional manner and act accordingly, because I think that's what the school department, the city of Lowell certainly deserves. So again, I certainly hope that we get the divine intervention here and get the guidance that we certainly need. that we certainly need to make the appropriate decision.
That's well put, Mr. Conway. And we will have probably different votes on different issues, but we will work together for one cause, and the Lowell Public School System. Mr. Leary?
Mayor, through you, if I could ask Mr. Lang to kind of brief the committee on his email that he sent out, a June email, I forgot the date actually, regarding option one and option two of some of the state legislature's plans that have forthcoming at this point. I think before we begin to go forward with deliberating and debating and ultimately voting on reductions within the Lowell Public Schools, that Mr. Lang put this in context so everybody, every committee member, everyone in the TV audience as well as in the room here today understands that it's, I guess right now it's still clear as mud is the best way of saying it, but there is options that we can do tonight that we can plan for the future. That Mr. Lang could explain that to us, that'd be very beneficial.
Is that on the state stabilization decision?
Correct.
Mr. Lang?
Thank you. I had sent a, an email communication, it was dated June 8th, so it was about the additional stimulus money. And page three of that, I'll actually just kind of walk you through, and we've got a few decisions to make. Part of the difficulty in my communication with the DOE, one of the, the two of the major factors that are affecting the uncertainty to our budget is that when the House budget came out, they set foundation budget, which is the amount that the state determines is, provides an adequate education in a particular community. They set the foundation budget at a higher amount than the Senate did. When the Senate went back into work on their budget, they used a different inflation index because the revenues had continued to drop for the state. So you saw foundation enrollment, foundation budget actually drop. Under the House budget, if we just concentrate on that, there was a little chart, it was a two-page chart. Foundation budget was 157 million. They determined what the city's net minimum contribution to education aid would be at 34.6 million. And then the state at that point was going to level fund Chapter 70. So we were going to receive 119.8 million dollars. That, if you combine your Chapter 70 state aid and your net minimum contribution, would normally bring you to that foundation budget amount. But Lowell, and there were a handful of communities that actually, when you did that, there was still a shortfall between the net school spending amount and foundation budget. And the governor had pledged at that time to use the state fiscal stabilization money to plug that gap. So we had been designated to receive 2.6 million dollars in stabilization money. That number is the number that we actually included in our budget sheet as we started budget deliberations. So when you took that particular number, if you recall, our level service budget for the year was 14.1 million. When you took all the stabilization money, including that 2.6 that was coming to us, that left us with about a 9.5 million dollar gap. So that's what we started out under. The state then, when the Senate budget came out, again, you had the difference in the foundation budget because of the inflation index that they used. You had a different net school spending amount, which was required of the city. And the long and the short of this is that the difference between the new gap in foundation was 4.2 million dollars. So the Senate actually, in their version of the budget, included a new column, and they urged the governor to use 4.2 million dollars instead of 2.6 in stabilization funds to bridge that gap. Under that scenario, if you use your starting amount of 14.1 million, less your 6.3 million overall stabilization, brings you to about 7.8. The difference for us to decide at this point is we really still don't know what type of stabilization money we're going to get. It could be the 2.6, it could be the 4.2. But if we look at the Senate budget, which is the last budget that was released, and it had the lower Chapter 70 amount, which the city manager has based his budget on, one might agree. If Chapter 70 goes up, then our stabilization money is going to go down. They should offset each other at this point. I, as I outlined in the memo, and I don't want to, you know, overget into it here, I think it might be advisable for the committee to insert the 4.2 million dollars in stabilization money at this time, under the premise that if Chapter 70 goes up, those funds will be coming to the school department, and stabilization would go down. So there'd be an offsetting journal entry. Under that particular scenario, given the first minute deliberations we had, we cut 4.5 million dollars. That would leave us tonight working at trying to reduce the budget another 3.2 million dollars. I would suggest that that would be a good target at this point in time, and that could be a potential spot where the school committee rests until we actually get the final numbers from the state. They could be higher, they could be lower, but following that logic that I laid out in the memorandum, I would advise the committee that that might be an option to consider this evening.
Okay. And Mr. Leary?
And I would concur with Mr. Lang's assessment for truly two, well, one big reason. The difference, I think, is like 1.6 million between the two, between the cuts of 3.3 million and the cuts of like 4.8 million, using round numbers. If we make the cuts at the 4.8 million tonight, the chances of getting that money back, even if it comes in, is, it's in jeopardy. However, if we take the less amount of the 3.2 million dollar cut tonight and tomorrow, and worst can, hopefully the worst-case scenario happens where there's one, an additional 1.6 million, we can always go back and make those cuts. The only big question I would have at that point, because majority of our money is our payroll, if these cuts come in August, or whenever the legislature finalizes the budget and the governor signs it, can we make payroll cuts, employee cuts, later in the summer point in time? And that's the only, I guess, unknown question. But other than that, I think it's probably unfortunate, it's the best of a worst situation, in my opinion.
I would recommend to that. I'm hoping that it's not going to be July or August that we know it. I'm hoping we get some direction from the governor's office over the next week to 10 days, with at least some type of a compromise between the House and Senate budget, some type of a directive to local communities, because everyone's up against this crunch. I think, you know, as far as the school department's concerned and meeting contractual obligations to notify staff of positions or whatnot, our contractual deadline is June 15th, which is next Monday. So we're going to have to proceed and notify people that they may or may not have jobs next year. And then the may, the big issue is going to be to recall them as soon as we know that funds become available. So we're probably, we're going to have to blanket enough people under the worst-case scenario, that if we ever had to come back in and cut an extra 1.6 million dollars, we would have covered ourselves. But as soon as we can finalize what that bottom-line budget is, I'd recommend the committee then act quickly and recall any people that were laid off that actually would be coming back to work in September to minimize the unemployment costs that would be incurred over the summer months.
Madam Superintendent?
But the budget situation is such right now, and the way the teachers' contract language states that when we lay off teachers who have non-professional status, that's the, teachers who are with us for the first three years, they're all to be pink-slept. So right now, once we trigger that particular part of the contract and lay these individuals off to, as Mr. Lang just said, we would be hiring them back only after we had final figures.
Mayor, if I could, one quick question. Would that apply to other types of employees as well, in addition to teachers, administrators, what have you?
Yes, again, it will depend on how you structure the various cuts and how at risk various units still will be. So we may leave, in regards to other contracts that don't have that exact language, a tier approach. So if we have to go another million, if we have to go another 2 million, what units would be affected, and we may have to lay off people prior.
Really, I mean, so I guess in essence, so if you're going to lay off, and I don't mean to belabor this, just to make sure we understand, everybody understands, if unfortunately you have to lay off, say, a principal, do you need to give that individual notice by June 15th?
You have presently in place principals' contracts that they would have had to have been known months ago for that to have occurred, and you still have bio provisions and, I mean, you have contracts with people, and there's nobody's contract that's...
So it's basically individualized, so if you had an, so if it's a custodian that you were going to lay off, say, the worst-case scenario, you came back, could you lay off a custodian? Because it's each position individually then. So it's something that we need to know, is, as we begin this process of cutting, if we only cut 3.2 million tonight, we need to be cognizant as a body, if other options could occur, what our limits are before we get to June 15th, I would imagine. If you could provide at least to the committee so we're all cognizant of what we're dealing with.
Ms. Mudd?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I think one of the key things we need to kind of keep in mind is that, and I think Mr. Lang had referenced this as well, that any increases we may see in Chapter 70, or as we look at the difference between these two proposals for the, basically the stimulus offset, I think the reality is, is that neither one of those is going to go up without the other one necessarily going down. That whether, you know, as funding is coming in, the city is, you know, this is just going to be the situation we're in, and I think we need to recognize that, rather than holding out hope that something's going to change, we need to recognize that we need to get at least to this 3.2 number, or a total of a 7.8 of cutting, and we need to make those choices, I think, now. You know, I will say we have a very full chamber here this evening still, which is great to see, I guess, disappointing in that, you know, in these times. But, you know, as I listen to everyone speak tonight, what I'm struck by is, and I can say it to all of you who sit here now and everyone at home, I feel, I feel heartily sorry, because I know that no one is going to escape this. And as a former Latin student at Lowell High School, I know what a, what an impact it's had. I will say I never danced, and that's really for the best on all, for everyone I was in high school with, but I recognize the value of the arts in a very profound way. And I, I mean, it's really, it's a, and I know you all recognize how difficult it is. It's difficult in the seats you sit in, it's difficult in the seats we sit in. But it really is devastating to think about that there are no good answers that we can, that we can really come to, and that all we can do right now is try and hit this, this 7.8 number with, I say with as little damage as possible. I think we all recognize that there's going to be real damage, there's going to be real losses throughout the district, and I know particularly this evening, we're talking about the high school. And I just hope we can, you know, again, collectively as a committee, be able to come up with some solutions that do the least damage. And I guess really, just based on what Mr. Lang and the superintendent were just presenting, I think it's important that we recognize that we need to start, we need to start making some decisions, and that at the very least, I think we need to look at an additional 3.2, you know, tonight, you know, in these immediate times, because we need to start making some decisions. And I think this hanging on is making it, you know, is just making a horrible situation even more horrible. Thank you.
Anyone on this? John? John Lang?
Sure. I just, I had one, a couple of questions through you to Mr. Lang. Have we, we met last week with some unions. Have we had any progress, any concessions, anything to work with as of yet with that?
Yeah, Mr. Hall has been in contact with the various unions. I can't say that he has any concrete proposals at this particular time. As soon as we do receive them, we bring them forward to you.
All right, but we kind of gave them a deadline. We'd like to see some action before we had to make cuts today, though.
Right.
So we don't have anything yet.
Madam Superintendent?
That's correct. As Mr. Lang just said, we have been in contact with all of the unions. They all know where the committee stands, the request that was made of the committee. The various unions were asked for concessions as, oh, 1% wage freezes, furloughs, and the administrator unit was also asked for the additional overall million-dollar cut. So we have not heard back from them, and my understanding and impression is that people are waited for, waiting for a voted number from the city, and perhaps we will hear after that time.
Okay. And then I had one, can we ask questions of the high school or at this point, or are we going to just, I mean, before we make some cuts, are we even starting to cut, or what are we going to do with that?
If the majority of the committee would like to do that?
Because I just have a couple of questions from the high school, if I could.
Mr. Samaras?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Samaras.
Dr. Jack to come up.
Okay, sure. I just, going through the course book, you know, and I know everything in this book is We've been talking about the languages, we've been talking about English and math teachers. So just for my, just so I know, I'm on page 75, the Family Consumer Science. Is that a big, is that, do a lot of kids go in there, or have, like, have we, and let me just go through a couple of things. So I'm looking at that, and I just want to know, how come we don't have any suggestions through that? And maybe even, you know, I'm going to get in a lot of trouble with this one, but music, okay? Some of those could be after-school programs. And then I'm just looking at page 99, like studio art and ceramics and sculpture, you know, maybe some of those could be offered after school. So how does that affect the budget? Like, why aren't we, are we looking at reductions there that would save an English teacher or math teacher?
No, Mr. Lang, I mean, just what you've addressed, the school committee asked us in the past to look at all courses that if, say, a ceramics class is only five students, we're going to end that class, we're not going to run that class. So there are a lot of classes like that that we would not run, but let me go back to...
So this is kind of like outdated at this point?
But the thing is, well, it's not outdated, it's, those are our course offerings, but we do not necessarily run them. There's a decision made, and we've made a decision, Dr. Jack had talked to a lot about how many of those courses are not running. So the thing is, I mean, that's very clear. But you asked, your first question was regarding the restaurant program. Restaurant program has approximately about 90 students, two teachers. It's, basically, it's an expensive program, but it's one of the programs that we have that's really a voc tech program that offers children an opportunity to get a skill. And the success rate that we've had from that program far, would far offset what I think is the cost at this present time. The number of students that go on to the culinary arts schools are wonderful.
But Family Consumer Science?
Yes.
Is that the same as the hospitality?
That's in, that's in the, it's in there.
All right.
But they're separate.
Okay. That's the page I was looking at, because it was like...
But Dr. Jack might have some specifics as to what you cut. Dr. Jack?
There's about 10 courses there, so I didn't know.
Just quickly, Mr. Leahy, with regard to the culinary arts program...
Well, I'm not really on there, though. I'm just on family, like...
Well, that's part of the department, so...
But I mean, like, tailoring classes.
Yes, as part of the overall Family Consumer Science department, tailoring as an example is a class. What we would look at, we would look at the course requests for September, and if the course requests were significant, which they actually are for this, I can talk to that one specifically, then that course would run. And then with regard to some of the other ones that you mentioned, some of the art courses, one of the, one of the recommended cuts in your proposal is one teacher in that department, and that, the first one is through a retirement. So as a result of the one cut, then it would be our job to go back and decide, as a result of that cut, what specific courses in that department would not run. So in fact, some of the courses that you mentioned might or might not run, depending on the enrollment.
All right, let me ask this. What if we just didn't offer any tailoring, childcare, yeah, just, just the tailoring and the child development, childcare, parenting classes? How does that affect it?
Well, if we did that, if we did that, to answer you specifically, because I have a fairly decent handle on the number of students that have requested those courses for next year, it would mean, as an example in tailoring, if there's one section of 26 students, so if we collapsed that class, then 26 students would have to be rescheduled into other electives. And one, they might not be interested, or they might. But a better idea would be for us to go and look at the undersubscribed classes as an example. I'm just making this up, it might be ceramics. If ceramics were an undersubscribed class, if there were only six students in ceramics as opposed to 28 in tailoring, then it would be our, then the, what we would do is collapse the ceramics class and reschedule six students as opposed to rescheduling 28 students out of the tailoring class. And that's, that's our job to figure out what are the best classes. With regard to, just one more comment, which doesn't specifically address what you're saying, but we have looked at some programs in other departments and have determined that those would become after-school programs. Example, yearbook in the newspaper. So those are examples of looks we've taken in other departments to address what you're saying, making them after-school activities.
And John, I could also say that probably 5% of the courses that you'll see in there we don't run.
Oh, okay.
But have been offered in the past because of, they were popular at one particular time. But each year we also clean the book out, so to speak. Now with budget cuts, our next direction would be if this continues, which it probably will be, what you're talking about for the next year would have to be in place.
All right. So all the reductions have been made?
Are, are, are in process.
In process. And unfortunately, one of the recommendations was, was a foreign language teacher. That's where we are at this point?
Correct.
That's what you're saying. So we've, we've eliminated everything we could, and now we're at that point where we're looking at a...
But, but this is going under constant review as we, as we speak also.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Madam Superintendent, then, Mr. Doherty.
Just wanted a clarification, I think for the committee, it may be helpful just to remind the committee that last time when we met and we talked about classroom size, the process that we went through was that Bill and Wendy met with the department heads and basically asked the department heads to look at and examine all of their classes, class sizes within that, and to bring forward recommendations given a 21, correct me if I'm wrong, a ratio of 21. So the exercise that they went through, Mr. Leahy, was exactly that. They looked at, I believe, some of the reference material that you're referencing is somewhat out of date now, because that activity happened in the last, or the exercise, sorry, in the last two weeks. So that is what has happened, and just another point I think that needs to be clarified is that in the area of languages, which you just brought up, when we asked the head of that department, Kamai was the other language that was put forward, it wasn't only Latin, and so there were other options. And as we stated at that high school subcommittee meeting, these are choices that nobody's going to want to have to make, and perhaps this year they won't be made, but the exercise that you just suggested that the high school go through, they have, and that's how we got to the 21 number. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Doherty, and then Mr. Conway.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to speak to what the superintendent was just talking about in terms of the reduction in teachers to go to a class size of an average of 21 students per teacher. When we, when the subcommittee met, it's true, we were looking at foreign language instruction, and Kamai came up as well as Portuguese and the Latin. My understanding was we weren't going to be making any decisions yet that the high school is going to come back to us with some creative plans such as combining, one, one of the discussions that came up was combining French III and French IV, both under-enrolled classes that could be combined so our students could get the benefit, and of course, it would require some cooperation from our teachers' union to see, you know, to provide differentiated instruction and things like that. So when I hear people tonight talking about the dance program being taken away, that absolutely makes no sense to me. I don't even know why it's on here as a line item. When we look at how we creatively get to a class size of 21 students, we're really looking at fairer distribution of students across the high school, as well as possibly combining some of these under-enrolled electives, like my example with French III and French IV. I think those decisions need to happen in the Lowell, to start with at the Lowell High School Subcommittee, and then be brought back to this full committee, that we are not going to eliminate a program where I think we've got over 80 students involved in dance right now, and as the speaker so eloquently pointed out tonight, it's a valuable resource for our students to have the dance program. The, the decisions we're making tonight regarding the reduction in teaching staff based on the declining enrollment is just that, that we, in many cases, we can look at reducing our number of teachers because of the declining enrollment, but how that fairer distribution of students or how programs get folded in, whether ceramics becomes joined with pottery, I, I don't know how that's going to play out. Those are further discussions that need to be had, and I, I think the high school needs some more time to look at the best way to plan for that, but I, I really, I don't think we have to be wiping out a program like Latin or dance to meet this, and maybe I'm wrong, if, if I'm missing some information, I'd love to hear it, but my thinking is we can do this class, you know, increase the class size to 21 students per teacher, and figure out a more effective way of distributing those students and offering the electives we offer to our students without doing some core damage to the high school. That's my feeling about it. Thank you.
Mr. Samaras, did you have a...
Well, basically, I mean, that's much of what we're doing at this particular time now, but we do, do need the bottom line number that we're going to work with, but of course, we wouldn't make any significant changes without coming back to the subcommittee and the high school to review that. We just need to know what's the bottom line in regard to our budget, and we're trying to save as much as we can.
Mr. Conway, and then Ms. Fattackany.
Thank you, Ms. Amia. I agree with my colleague, Ms. Doherty, as far as the dance teacher is concerned, and believe me, that's the, that would be the last class I, I think I would be effective in, but I can say that there's approximately 160, is there 160 students in that, in that class, or 100?
But it's over two semesters, Mr. Conway, so there's actually 80 students taking it in first semester and, and second.
So, okay.
So it's 80, 80 kids taking it.
Okay. And, and, and is it also correct that they use this in lieu of phys ed? Then as far as I'm concerned, it makes absolutely no sense, there's no logic, as far as I'm concerned, to get rid of that particular program when they already, when they have sufficient number of, of students and also can satisfy the PE program. The other, the other question I have is the, the Latin program. Do we have, I'm not sure if we, if we clarified this, Latin III, Latin IV, that, that is in the same class?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes, we are...
And how many, and how many students signed up for Latin?
Well, I can recall, I can tell you that in Latin I, there are 60, 60-odd students, and then the numbers would, would go, and there would be a similar number in, in the second year, because most students would take two years, and then after that, the number would begin to drop because fewer would take three and four. But to just clarify the other question that you had, we do combine in, in all of the foreign languages right now, when we get up into that level in most cases, IV and AP and, and the III and IV together, so we've, we've done that prior to this year, as a matter of fact.
Well, then, why would this, why would this program, I, I don't understand this, why would this program be, be put on the, on the chopping block? This, you know, and again, I, I'm not new to this particular game, I mean, I, I've been down to high school as long, actually longer than both of you, and, and I think that the Latin, when I take a look at the Latin program, I'm saying to myself, you know, I see some other places that I might want to cut before the Latin program?
Well, I think, I'll just answer this quickly, Mr. Samaras can answer it, but we, we were instructed to cut 2.5 million dollars, and we started to address the concern first to try to address the, the 21 to 1 student ratio, so that was part of the thinking. And so when, when you get to that kind of money, we did certainly a lot of combining classes, but we could not get to that figure without reducing staff significantly, and when we start to look at the overall numbers, then we had to make some decisions, and that's why there were five math teachers, for example, five English teachers, and so we just made the decision based on the mandate as, as, from the school committee as well as the superintendent asking for the 21 to 1 ratio.
Right, and, and...
Could I just add to that? But the thing is, our, when we actually make the cut, our final cut will have to come before this school committee, I mean, for, for a final judgment. The issue with the Latin, there's several aspects of it, because there are many students in the lyceum, or parents in the lyceum, that do not like the Latin as a requirement because their children are more bent towards technology and what have you, and they, Latin has been seen in the way. I'm just telling you, there's been issues, but the thing is, what I've been able to see tonight is the support that I have for the Latin program. I mean, that's important, but the thing is, I basically just need the bottom line. At some point, we're going to have another review of everything that we do, and we want to cause the least amount of damage possible, but I can't do it without a bottom line number, and then come back to you and say to the school committee, I can reinstate Latin, but I'm going to have to give up this. I may do this, but I have to give up this. Everything's a trade-off.
Mr. Samaras, I, I, you know, and I can appreciate the, the time and the effort and the energy that has been put into, into coming up with this list, because, and I know that when at a meeting, the superintendent said that you people have been meeting many, many times, working out these, these cuts. The only problem I have, to be quite frank with you, and, and I know this is not going to be a surprise to you, but there just seems to be too many teachers on this list, and as far as I'm concerned, the, I think we need to certainly preserve the administration. I understand that, we all understand that, but I think that once that classroom, once we start picking away at that classroom, I think that's where education really takes place. And I think some of the speakers that came up here, one of the administrators did an absolutely excellent job, and I understand that, and there are a lot of issues that take place in the course of a day, but keep in mind something, who is dealing with those issues every single day when that bell rings at 7:30? It's all the teachers. It's as simple as that. And I think that, again, I, I just have difficulty, and I know that, that, that there are members of my colleagues here, perhaps I'm sure disagree with me, but I just see that there are, it seems as though our teaching staff is going to be devastated at the high school, especially if we go up any more than 21, which I think would be terrible. Thank you, Mr. Ma'am.
Ms. Fattackany.
Thank you, Your Honor. This entire school committee sat in our, in our, in our school department office, and we specifically asked that some creative solutions be brought forward from the administration at the high school. Now, I recognize that they are working long and hot hours, and they are trying to put forward some, some possible cuts for us to look at, but I have to say that what I feel like I'm looking at is not what is best, but what was easy. And it's easy to throw out a dance teacher, and it's easy to throw out the Latin teacher knowing full well the ramifications of what those cuts mean. So I, I have some concern that the thought process regarding what the ramifications were, weren't really considered, and this school committee did make it very clear that we wanted some creative decisions to come forward from the high school to the school committee to help us make some better decisions. Now, we did get some administrative cuts as we did ask for, but I believe Ms. Doherty did indicate, and this whole committee did agree, that we would be looking for the high school to come to the school committee with some very creative ideas on how not to cut these programs, and I don't see that in front of me. So I'm concerned about making certain cuts because I think that we still could have some conversation about some creative solutions. Look, I, I sat here, and I had to lay off people when it was very difficult, where you had to call out somebody's name, and everybody had to vote for it, my God, it was horrendous, and I, and I don't like doing it, and I don't want to do it again. But the reality is, we have some enormous budget shortfalls. However, we have some very bright people who work for us, who I believe if they collectively sat, truly heard what this committee was saying, they could come forward with some very creative solutions on how not to take the big butcher knife to the budget, but to take the scalpel. So what, I, I don't, I don't really feel like I'm seeing the scalpel. I feel like I'm taking, I feel like it's a paintbrush, and I, and I, so I'm concerned about what that means regarding the ramification of losing the dance teacher. All right, we all know, none of us can dance, okay? But some kids can dance very well, and will have a future at it. So we cut the dance teacher, that means we might have to hire another phys ed teacher because all those dance students go into the phys ed department and clog the phys ed numbers. We could have been looking tonight at combining a couple of different classes, and I don't see that. So yes, I'm going to make some cuts tonight, but I'm still looking forward for the administration at the high school to put their very bright collective heads together and put something in writing for us to take a look at that doesn't wield the butcher knife, but does in fact wield a scalpel. Thank you.
Mr. Samaras, would you like to, then we're going to move on. Go ahead. Mr. Samaras.
All right. You know, I, I can accept what the committee members have stated. Regarding to Mr. Conway, my only difference is, I, I really feel that, and I think you know as well, in the morning, both the teachers and administrators work very closely with the teachers. I mean, I think everybody accepts that. As far as being creative, we were asked to cut basically administration. What I'm looking at, and what I'm trying to say to this committee, I understand where you, where we're coming from. When we talk about the dance program, I started the dance program with Betty Santagati. We, I was a, you know, a major force in seeing that this happens. Our numbers have dropped considerably, we're down to really probably 60, it's gone between 67 and 80 students per semester. So we've looked at that, but we've looked at the possibility of making that an after-school program or somehow including that with the fiscal education program. What I'm asking you right now is really the issue, as far as being creative, time is running out, and what I need to do is I have my, I need to have my team intact. I mean, the thing is, we're not talking about administrators who have not direct contact with, with students, and if you allow us, what we're talking about, what Mrs. Doherty talked about, what Ms. Fattackany talked about, what everybody has talked about, we are working to combine classes, we are working to make sure we can make it work. I need the bottom numbers, and the thing is, I don't want to go, I don't want to do this myself, I believe the superintendent and I want to come before this committee and say, when it's all said and done, this is what we've got in place to ensure that this high school is able to be operational next year. I mean, the one thing I don't want to do is, my walking out the door is walking out and leaving a mess, leaving a school that doesn't function, that doesn't work. I need to leave a school that functioned, that works, that every parent he or she feels that they have input to, and that the students feel that they're going to get the support that they need. So the thing is, that there was nothing done with a paintbrush, this was done as carefully as we could, but it's a continuous process. It doesn't end tonight. It will continue.
Madam Superintendent, then we're going to move on with this agenda. Madam Superintendent?
Just another point of clarification with regards to the process that I understood that Wendy and Bill went through with regards to proposing with their department chairs the cuts and the programs. The difficulty that people presently are facing with regards to combining the specialized programs, and I'm not exactly sure how we're going to overcome this particular hurdle, but when I ask very similar questions of, could we combine pottery with the dance teacher? Because, you know, but that's it, in those specialized programs, it's pottery, it's sculpting, it's painting, and people don't necessarily have, and, and Betty, you're here, so I don't know if it would be helpful for you to share this conversation with the committee, but with our specialized programs, that makes our high school so unique, it's like asking the Latin teacher, who knows Latin, can you also speak French? And maybe not. So that's the dilemma, and so when we gave them the directive to look at class sizes of somewhere between 21 and 25, to bring it up from 18.7, what can you look at and what can you do? They had these conversations with their department chairs that said, okay, well, if the target is 21, we need to have obviously, you know, 100-student caseload, 100 and, 100 and, and 125 would be a 25 caseload. So when we have classes, for example, and again, correct me if I misspeak, please, but if we have a dance teacher who has 80 in her, in her troop over two different terms, that position is going to be one of the positions that Betty's going to have to suggest if we're looking at a type of a caseload. So again, it's going to be difficult for other recommendations to be made if we're looking at the numbers in that way.
Go ahead.
May I just, one, thank you Superintendent Scott. Exactly, that's exactly what we have done. That's why we were able to propose the reductions in the number of staff the way we did it, is because we looked at the... way we did it, is because we looked at the, the 21-to-1 ratio, we looked at classes that were undersubscribed, such as the dance. We will not ask for an additional phys ed teacher, because we have able, we've been able to look at the phys ed numbers, and we'll be able to redistribute 80, 80 students over the number of phys ed teachers that we have. So that is exactly some of the steps. To give you just one or two very specific examples about how this is an ongoing process, is we've looked in the math department, for example. And we have MCAS prep classes, and we have support classes in math. Those kinds of classes will be re, will be combined. The curriculum will be redesigned, so that we can raise the class averages and accommodate the needs of two or three types of students that will be in there. So that process is going on all the time, and that is why we were able to propose those numbers to you.
Okay, with that said, very briefly, up to this date, we have cut $4,554,421. And from what I hear from the committee, and the superintendent, and Mr. Lang, the magic number is 7.8 million for cuts. Is that so?
7.8.
7.8?
Still around there.
7.8 million. With that said, if Mr. Samaras is coming forward and agreeing to cuts at the high school of $2,537,404, that will bring the cuts to $7,91825. It is a start, and no matter what this half does or that half does, it's going to be a disagreement. And is 7.8 million dollars going to be enough for cuts? I don't know. We don't know until we get the exact figures from Beacon Hill, what the cherry sheet says, what the chapter 70 budget is, and so forth. I really don't know. We're all like Mandrake the magician, trying to come up with a figure and come up with a solution. And once again, I, we want to thank you for being here and staying here with us, and, and listening to this debate and this conversation. But that's what I'm putting out, and it's a start. And if Mr. Samaras can live with that, that, Mr. Samaras, I might say that if there's other cuts coming along, we might have to revisit the high school. Mr. Larry?
I'd like to make a motion that we cut $178,450 out of the central administration, which is the moving savings for next year, FY '09, '10, when we move from the central administration office to the more, the, excuse me, the Rogers School. That's on page two of the superintendent's recommendations.
Shall we start with page one?
Well, I thought we'd do one we could get done real quick, but apparently not, so.
$178,450?
Yep.
You cut that from the central administration.
Yep.
We have to find it.
I just have a question. Do we need to vote if we're going to move first, though?
On the motion?
Yeah, should we?
Why don't I redo my motion that we move from the downtown mayor Mac office to the Rogers School?
So we, we would make a motion to move out of downtown, right? We have to make that motion first, before we, because I don't think we did.
Is that what the motion is, Mr. Larry?
Yes.
The, the motion is to vacate?
Let me clarify. My motion is to move from the present location to the Rogers Middle School Central Office.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Conway. Any debate on the issue? Ms. Fattackany?
Your Honor, it truly pains me for us to move out of downtown. We have been a tenant here for a number of years, and I just, I think that our presence in the downtown has always been a strong presence. I think that people recognize that come downtown and part of the school department, the school department does reside there. I think the most important thing about what resides there is a parent information center, and I'm really concerned about the parent information center moving to a more remote location. Others might not think it's remote, but I do. And I wish that we had had a conversation about the parent information center at least staying in the, at the downtown location, because I just think everybody knows where it is. And the unfortunate reality is, is that now, my concern is that people will be confused about where they go to register their kids and get bus tickets and all that, that other fun stuff that happens before the first day of school. So I got to tell you, I, I'm going to vote for it, because there's no support to retain the space downtown, but we have, we have been a tenant downtown for a long time, and I'm truly sad to see us move from the downtown area.
I, I hear where you're coming from, Ms. Fattackany. But on the other side of the coin, had we stayed downtown, we would have to come up with another $530,000 in cuts. And if we have 95,000 square feet at the Rogers School, that's exactly how much square feet, feet there is at that school.
May I?
We just couldn't, I just couldn't justify staying there.
I understand, Your Honor. May I just through you to Assistant Superintendent Jay Lang, do we have an idea yet of the costs of, that the build-out is going to cost us when we go to the Rogers School?
We'll be actually developing that over the coming weeks, once this action is finalized. Within the, the budget, the committee needs to know this, we're under our existing lease through December 31st, so our lease is on a calendar year. So we're still going to be at the Bonn-Mesche building through December 31st. The lease is 656,900 a year, so we'll be into that for half of the lease. And then of the remaining half, 328,450, I'm recommending that 150,000 be set aside for moving and upgrade costs, things of that sort. So that that's where the savings of 178,450 comes from during the four, during this first year. So when we get to that page of the budget book, that would be the, the savings. And then FY 11, you'll end up picking up the other three quarters, which is 478,450. So at this point in time, I'd recommend 150,000 be placed aside for any moving relocation costs that are necessary.
Okay, thank you.
We can do that, just prior to the end of the budget, Jay, right? Right. And, Mr. Larry?
Yes, thank you. Through you to Mr. Lang. Could you clarify that again? Did, what's the hundred, is that for just moving costs? Is that for renovating some offices, too?
No, the, the 150,000, we're going to work now over the next two or three weeks to kind of finalize quotes. There are going to be expenses to physically move from our existing space to the Rogers. There are going to have to be, you know, some phone lines run, things of that sort. So, once I actually tie in those costs, I'll come back to the committee and actually report on what it's going to cost us to move. But it's going to be a staged move. It's going to have to happen over the six months. The school will be prepared. The first occupants will be the Family Literacy Center folks, who will move in over the summer months. So it's not that we're actually going to be able to engage individuals to just have one big move, so you'd have some economy with the cost savings, but we're going to have to phase the different departments over the six months moving in. I don't know exactly what that number's going to be yet, but I'll give you a full report probably by July 1st, once we meet with all the different vendors and contractors and get everything set up at that school.
All right. And just one other quick question. Who actually does, when we have to divide classrooms, put walls up, things like that, does that go through the city? Does city work?
We're actually, we're looking at all the building plans right now to kind of figure out how we're going to set it up. We're going to take a very minimalistic view as far as creation of new walls and things like that. It is a school, someday in the future might serve as a school again, so we don't really want to go into building, a major build-out of the building. You'll see a lot of the modular furniture like we have at Central Office now, you know, those individual panel walls, things of that sort. So I'm not anticipating a major construction at the site. It'll be using the existing furnishings and equipment we have at Central, more just how to phase that over to the other facility.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Fattackany, and then the superintendent.
Thank you, Your Honor. Through you, Your Honor, to Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Lang. Based upon the loan that we received to rehab the school in the early 90s, are we under any contractual obligation based upon that to retain students in the building?
Madam Superintendent?
Thank you. Yes, in 1994, there was a renovation done by the state of the SBA office, and I have been speaking with the executive director of that department. And until 2014, the city is still receiving $900,000 every year of compensation from that original renovation. It is my understanding, talking with her, although we are bringing pre-K classes, which may be enough already from the Family Literacy Center, we will be working with her office over the next year to look at exactly if we have to bring in more programs. Transitional K class, we may also put there as well. So we do have a year, she said, school departments across the Commonwealth, when they're in a restructuring effort like we are presently, face the same dilemma, and that they're willing and able to work with us on that. So we will update you when we have more information from that office. Thank you.
Madam Superintendent?
Just another comment with regards to Mr. Larry's request with regards to office space. Presently, the office space, many of the offices in our present location, very few of them have actually concrete walls and doors. Many of them, especially on the third floor, are all cubicles, and so that will be very similar at the Rogers School as well.
Okay, if I may, I went through the budget extensively, and I had to use the 2009 budget as a reference to the 2010 budget. And when I did, I found substantial pay raises. And Mr. Lang, I'd like to present a motion, if I could, to the committee that for this year and for all proposed budgets, hence.
We have a motion on the floor.
Oh, well, I'm sorry.
We have a motion on the floor.
I'm sorry, whose motion?
My motion.
Okay. All, all in favor of the motion?
Well, it's going to cost money, so it should be.
Roll call. I'm sorry.
Mr. Leahy?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Larry?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mia Carfield?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Ms. Fattackany?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
As I was saying, going through the budget, I had to use last year's budget as a reference for this year's budget. And what I'm asking for Mr. Lang to do for further budgets, future budgets, is, is the name and proposed salary for each individual position, including grant-funded employees, make sure everyone's name is in the budget, whether they're grant-funded or not, they should be in a budget. That's A. B, fiscal year '09 actual figures and fiscal year '10 proposed figures in audit that the committee members can track the budget. In other words, on the city budget, if we had an employee in fiscal year 2009 making $80,000, there's a new figure, that employee making $82,000. So you would know. So, Mr. Lang, is there a problem with that?
No, I mean, I can take any direction the committee wants to give me. It's just, that's just not the way the school department budget's been set up in the past.
Well, I, I think this, this system is the most equitable and most intelligent way to do it, because this way here, the committee can look at the budget and what, what was the budget last year versus the budget this year. And I did find substantial pay raises in this year's budget. And I just want to let the students and parents know, there is $3 million in this budget for salary increases. Is that right, Madam Superintendent?
That's correct.
Madam Superintendent, go ahead.
Just a couple of points, Mayor. I do believe the accounting practice in the past of not bringing forward the, all of the positions that are in grants, it's because those grants and that process is with the Department of Education and the federal government. So it's not a vote that's required by the school committee per se. So the task before us right now is your general operating budget. So as Mr. Lang has, has mentioned, obviously, he can give you a full and detailed accounting of how all those grants monies are spent and who's paid for on those grants, but it doesn't require any action from the committee. So it, for, for many decades, that's why you haven't seen it in this process. The, the second point, just with regards to the issue of the raises that are seen in the FY '10 budget, I, I believe it should be made totally clear that another counting procedure, which is totally proper, is that last year, when the FY '09 numbers came before the committee, the teacher's contract was not settled yet. And so once that teacher's contract was settled, it was after the FY '09 budget book had been given out. So the numbers that were in the FY '09 budget were in fact salary figures of FY '08, because you hadn't voted the contract yet, one. And in good, not to tip your hand, if you thought it was going to be 2% or 3%, you wouldn't put that in a public document and say, okay, this is what the raise is going to be. That's past practice, again, for decades at the school department. I mean, that can change going forward if people have issue with that. But I just want to explain why when you look at your line items in your budget, an individual may have received this year, given now that they have received what was 4% over the fiscal year, now their salary looks like, all of them, that they've been bumped by 4% and they've all received raises. Well, that was a settlement from last year, from a different fiscal year. So I just wanted to explain that that's how it has always been accounted for here.
All I want to do is explain to the committee and everyone in attendance, it'd be much easier for the committee, looking at the budget, they have the figures from last year's budget next to this year's budget. And it would raise a red flag immediately if you see a substantial pay raise, which it did with me. So, I, I discussed earlier, Mr. Samaras is comfortable with that cut. Is that so, Mr. Samaras? Ms. Fattackany?
Thank you, Your Honor. While Mr. Samaras might be comfortable with that cut, I think that members of the school committee may not be. So I, I know it's going to be painful.
Well, let's move on, get the pen and pencil out, and let's make the cuts.
Okay. Okay. That's what we're going to do.
Okay.
Thank you.
Point of honor, point of, point of order, Your Honor, you made a motion about the budget for future, and
Yes.
I mean, I don't know if that's a real motion.
It's a motion or a request, and I think Mr. Lang can.
So we, we're not going to vote on that?
Right, right.
Okay.
Okay, what's the?
Should we go to page one?
Page one, let's go.
I, I think we're at the central administration.
The only thing I might suggest for the committee is, because we did spend a good amount of time on the high school, there was a revised sheet on the high school, still to go programmatically, because these cuts are spread out through 24 pages, and I think to just go page by page would be very confusing at this point.
Right.
Can I recommend you start with the high school, and just go through it in its entirety, and then I can go back in and make the edits as we go through. Yes, that's correct.
So make a motion. Your Honor, if I might, while we are going through the high school, thank you, we're going to have a athletic subcommittee meeting tomorrow evening to discuss the proposed cuts that are here on the Lowell High School budget. So I'm going to ask that we not look at those cuts yet, because I'd like to have Mr. DiProffio and Mr. Samaras, and of course, Mr. Lang, explain again the ramifications of what some of those cuts mean, and what the charge for the boathouse also means regarding the athletic budget at the high school.
Okay.
Thank you.
Lowell High School, on Lowell High School?
We'll wait till we get here.
Ms. Dougherty?
I motion to eliminate the assistant student database administrative position.
I have to have a motion, go to Lowell High School.
Go to Lowell High School portion of the budget. I'm sorry. I didn't realize we had to do that, sorry.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
And just for your information purposes, the, the number of positions that are in red at the top of the page, the committee acted on at the May 30th session. So those I moved to the top. So if you start with the black ones, those you haven't taken action on yet.
I mo- motion to eliminate the assistant student database administrative position at Lowell High School.
Second by Mr. Larry. Any discussion, any debate? Roll call.
Yes.
Mr. Larry?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mia Carfield?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Ms. Fattackany?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Mr. Larry?
Make a motion to cut the coordinator of student services position at Lowell High School.
Second by Ms. Dougherty. Second. Motion by Mr. Larry, second by Ms. Dougherty. Any discussion or debate? Ms. Dougherty?
I'd just like to point out that this position is a real loss for the high school in terms of the number of students and staff that came under this administrator, and that I'd be looking forward to getting a detailed report from the high school about how we're going to distribute that work fairly at the high school, so that those students' needs are still being met. Thank you.
Ms. Larry?
And I agree with Ms. Dougherty. I think the key is that the Lowell High School subcommittee meet right after we discuss and debate the high school cuts, and actually ensure, not only when we talk about the teaching positions, you were very articulate about that, Ms. Dougherty, that we look at that, as well as how the workload's going to be distributed amongst the, the folks that are, that are there. Thank you.
Any other discussion, debate? Roll call.
Mr. Leahy? Mr. Larry?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mia Carfield?
Yes.
Mia Caulfield?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Ms. Fatacante?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Next, anyone else who would like to, Mr. Conway?
Where it says four mathematic teacher positions, I'd like to amend that to make a motion to cut two mathematic teaching positions.
I'll second that.
We have a motion to only cut two math teachers instead of four. Seconded by Ms. Fatacante, on the motion?
Your Honor, I know this is difficult, but we are trying to get to a class size of 21 at the high school. We all understand that that is equitable to do when we have just moved the middle schools up to a class size and average of 25. I'm not gonna support this motion, because I'm gonna go with the headmaster's original recommendation.
Mr. Leary?
And I, just to epitome what Ms. Dougherty just said, we make a conscious decision that we need to make cuts, and unfortunately, these are some of the cuts. And what Ms. Dougherty, and I think even Ms. Fatacante, had pointed out earlier, that the Lowell High School subcommittee needs to sit down and see exactly how this work is gonna be distributed. So, it's not, the teaching positions in themselves are not gonna be the final what position. So, I'm gonna support the headmaster's recommendations as well, thank you.
Anyone else? The motion is to cut only two math teachers rather than four. A yes vote would be to support the motion by Mr. Conway. Roll call.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
No.
Ms. Martin?
No.
Mia Caulfield?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
No.
Ms. Fatacante?
Yes.
Four yeas, three nays, passes.
Mr. Conway?
The next item, I'd like to amend that. Instead of four English teachers, I'd like to make it two, eliminate two English teaching positions.
I'll second that.
Motion to reduce the four English teachers that are slated to be cut to two. Seconded by Ms. Fatacante, any discussion? Ms. Dougherty?
I'd just like to remind my colleagues that we are trying to get to 3.2 million in cuts, that we have come up with a fair system in terms of class size at the high school.
I might say before the roll call, this is extremely difficult. And if we're gonna cut eight to nine million dollars out of this budget, you can't expect not to cut some teachers. And it's just, it's reality. And I hate to say that, but it's, you know... Roll call.
What's the motion?
Roll call is to cut two English teachers rather than four. Yes, same thing.
The last one, same thing.
Your Honor, you know that I'm supporting cutting the four. That's why I'm voting no to cut the two.
I know that.
Okay.
I know that.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
No.
Ms. Martin?
No.
Mia Caulfield?
No.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
No.
Ms. Fatacante?
Yes.
Three yeas, four nays, defeated.
Next, anybody else make some cuts here? Ms. Dougherty?
Motion to eliminate two social studies teacher positions.
Seconded on the motion?
I'm fine with that. Motion to combine the next three line items, eliminate two social studies teacher positions, eliminate one science teacher position, and eliminate one English language learner teacher position.
And I'd second that.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Who seconded, I'm sorry.
Miss, the spokeswoman.
Thank you.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mia Caulfield?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Ms. Fatacante?
No.
Six yeas, one nay, passes.
Mr. Lang?
I just have a recording question, I apologize. When the English teacher cut, it was to move it from four to two, and it was defeated. Is there any action then on the English teachers, or you're gonna leave all four?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask.
No, you only voted to not cut the two.
For the English teachers, we voted to cut four.
Right. So, we voted that, so now we go back to the English teachers?
Yeah. We haven't voted?
No.
No, the vote was to cut two English teachers, but the motion failed.
Motion failed.
So, do you want to cut four?
The cut stayed the same.
Right, so I would, let's go back to that. I will make a motion to eliminate four English teacher positions.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Roll call.
Mr. Leahy?
No.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mia Caulfield?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
No.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Ms. Fatacante?
No.
Four yeas, three nays, passes.
Anyone else?
I suggest we pass by dance.
What's that?
I suggest, I make a motion that we continue to reinstate, that we continue to have the dance teacher, that we not cut the dance teacher.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Roll call.
Yes, to keep it. Thank you.
Yeah, yes, to keep it, yeah. Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mia Caulfield?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Ms. Fatacante?
Yes.
Seven yeas, it's approved.
Ms. Dougherty?
Motion to eliminate one art teacher position.
Any second on that motion? Seconded by Ms. Martin? Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mia Caulfield?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
No.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Ms. Fatacante?
Yes.
Six yeas, one nay, passes.
Mr. Leary?
Make a motion that we cut two instructional technology specialist positions.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Fatacante, any discussion on the motion? If none, roll call.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mia Caulfield?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Ms. Fatacante?
Yes.
Seven yeas, it's approved.
Your Honor, I believe the next item is foreign language teacher positions. And again, we had Lowell High Subcommittee meeting the other night, and during that Subcommittee meeting, we got from the headmaster what were the most taken, and it's probably not the best English, so I apologize, but what were the most taken or scheduled foreign language classes? And I believe there were foreign language classes with much less students in them than the Latin classes. And never did I hear Mr. Samaras indicate on that evening that some students or some parents in the Latin lyceum did not like the concept of taking Latin. Well, the issue, when you enter into a program called the Latin lyceum, is that you will take some Latin, as painful as that might be. But I think people in the program fully recognize the enormous benefit that gets you on your college transcript. So, I have some concern with cutting out two language teachers. What I'd like to do is I'd like to, we can either do it tonight and have Mr. Samaras come to the microphone and tell us, or have Dr. Jack come to the microphone and tell us which are the most prevalent classes taken or scheduled in the language arts department? And then maybe we can make a better decision that way.
That's fine with me.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Mr. Samaras?
These positions are retirements, by the way. These are retirement positions. These two. The two foreign language positions are retirement positions. No, French, I believe French and Spanish. Both have retired French teachers.
Where is the Latin teachers on this list?
There isn't. No, when you're asked about the two foreign language positions, that's, I'm sorry, wait a minute. We eliminated one foreign, the week before, you eliminated one foreign language teacher, that's one retirement. Are these two the same retirement? All right, no, for clarification, when we, this was, when this was brought up, the idea of using, doing away with the retired teachers was tabled. So, these two positions here are now the retired teachers. The language position that was eliminated before would be considered either the Latin or the Portuguese, I believe.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's right. No, you're right, yeah, here's, no, you're right, you're right. The first one is gone, and of these two, one would be a retirement and the other one would be the Latin, you're correct. Yeah, because the first, because it's one gone here and the first two is...
Two budgets.
One is gone, and if we pick the next two, one is a retirement and the other is the Latin. So, how about if we just eliminate the retired teacher's position from the budget? That makes sense? And that lets us keep the Latin teacher, right?
That's true attrition.
It's not gonna get us to the number, but it gets us closer.
If I can.
Mr. Lang, go ahead. Correct.
There were three, there were three total foreign language teachers recommended for reduction. One happened to be in the first tier, which we took care of at the top of the page, and the two are down below. Of the three people, two are retirements. The third person would be a real person, teaching...
But if you recall, in the first meeting, it was stated that none of the retired teachers would be included in the first aspect of the layoff, because they believed Ms. Martin wanted to know the status of what was occurring with all of the retired teachers, whether they'd be replaced or not.
Mr. Conway?
Where is the Latin teacher listed on this, on this list?
It's just the third position. Mr. Jarvis is here, the language. They're all called foreign language, Mr. Conway.
I'm sorry?
They're all just called foreign language.
Okay, so it says here, eliminate two foreign language teaching positions. Is that what we're talking about, page six?
Yeah.
Okay. And I think Ms. Fatacante said, well, one of them is retiring, is that right? Well, two of them are retired, how can there be two retiring, because you've got... Oh, all right, all right, we've already finished that one.
So, Your Honor, my original question to Mr. Samaras, and maybe the head of the department could help, by indicating to the school committee which rank the most, you know, rank the languages in terms of the number of students who are enrolled, that might help us make a decision about where to make a cut.
Okay, Ms. Fatacante. The largest number of requests that I have is for Spanish. And then after that, I have French, then Kamai, and then Latin, and then Portuguese.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's very helpful.
Mr. Leary?
Yeah, and I appreciate, thank you, Mr. Jarvis, and thank you, Mr. Samaras. I think part of the problem is, is that Mr. Samaras had articulated that he wanted to bring back a proposal based on 25 teaching positions after he knew what the committee's final number is. But in our infinite wisdom, we decided to go through the list and cut two here, two there. And it might be funny to some folks, I guess, but it's kinda sad now that you're ripping through these things and we're asking, how many people are taking Portuguese? How many people are taking Kamai? I mean, I know this, we went through this in Lowell High Subcommittee meeting, which every single person, whether it was Spanish, French, Kamai, Latin, then Portuguese. So, the least, that least language taken is Portuguese, we all know that. So, I don't know why we had to drill the headmaster, asking exactly, you know, what's the least taken? I mean, it's, we're all cognizant of that. What's the recommendation from the headmaster? You wanna cut one, you know, this is something, now that we're, the horse is out of the barn, we're gonna go through this and we're gonna make less than intelligent decisions. So, I mean, I don't, if you wanna take, put this in suspense account, and then we can do this at the second hearing, that might be the wise thing to do at this point, is take those two positions until the administration at the high school can provide a clear recommendation as to what they want. If they wanna hire, in other words, if there's a huge demand for French, and even for French teachers teaching, and that's something that they highly value, maybe you wanna go out and hire a French teacher. It's not, it's about what the students need and what their expectations, the parents and the taxpayers' expectations are. So, if you need, you know, a Latin teacher, you go out and hire a Latin teacher. If you don't need a Portuguese teacher, you don't hire a Portuguese teacher. If, it isn't about who's retiring, it's about what you need, so you can be effective.
Ms. Fatacante?
Thank you, Your Honor. With all due respect to my colleague, it is about who's retiring, because if somebody is retired from a position, then I think it's easier for us to make that, make that elimination of that position. Now, I understand it's the person, the French department is retiring. What does that mean, and what, how does it impact the program? Mr. Samaras did indicate the other night that we might be able to combine some sections. I thought we were gonna see a proposal about that, but apparently we're not. Mr. Samaras very clearly indicated to us the other night that the position that was being eliminated was a Latin teacher. That was very clear. And that's the premise that we all went on. And that's what got lots of people out here tonight.
So, what is your motion, Ms. Fatacante?
My motion is to just eliminate the person whose position is retiring. That's it.
Mr. Conway? Second, motion to eliminate the person who's retiring by Ms. Fatacante, seconded by Mr. Conway, Ms. Martin.
You mean foreign teachers?
Could I ask, just in terms of the wording, perhaps we might wanna say eliminate one French teacher position?
That would be perfect, thank you. Eliminate one French teacher's position, please, through you, Mr. Mayor, to our recording secretary.
One French teacher position.
One French teacher position.
Seconded by Mr. Conway, any discussion, debate on the motion? Roll call.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
No.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mia Caulfield?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Ms. Fatacante?
Yes.
Six yeas, one nay, passes.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Mr. Lang, could you give us a figure of how much we've cut so far?
Yeah, so far, without looking at the insurance, I haven't calculated that yet. It's $809,200.
$809,200?
$200.
So, through you, Your Honor, to Assistant Superintendent Lang, could you say that we were, we had just cut a million dollars that would include the, that would include the insurance? Would that...
If you give me one second, I can give you a calculation.
Okay, we'll give you...
We have a long way to go.
Yeah, $990,000. Just under a million.
$990,000. Ms. Dougherty?
I make a motion that we continue to cut. We look at the next three positions, which is to eliminate clerk position in the data processing center, eliminate a clerk position in the junior air force ROTC program, and eliminate 11 lead teacher stipends.
Do I hear a second? Seconded by Ms. Martin. Everyone heard the motion that's been seconded? Any discussion or debate?
I need a clarification on what the needed teachers, you want 11 of those?
Yes.
They're stipends.
Roll call.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mia Carfield?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Ms. Fattakante?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Anyone on this side of the council chambers that want to make some cuts?
Well, Your Honor, I would like to hold the next two until we have our athletic subcommittee meeting tomorrow night. So the next one is reduce LHS Athletic Department, contracted transportation, and eliminate intramural sports. We'd like to, I'd like to hold on those until we have our athletic subcommittee meeting tomorrow night, sir.
That's fine.
Thank you.
That's not a problem. Ms. Martin?
Mr. Mayor, I would recommend finishing off this page with the, a motion to eliminate the Saturday morning tutor buyback program and the after-school detention program.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Conway, you get that. Roll call.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mia Carfield?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Ms. Fattakante?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Next?
Your Honor, the next page has a bunch of assistant coaches, and I think that should also be deferred for my colleagues' athletic subcommittee meeting. So I'd make that in the form of a motion.
No, that's, that's fine, we can, we know.
Oh, okay. So then the next line item is to eliminate the parent liaison position.
Second.
Excuse me, what was that again?
Eliminate one parent liaison position at the high school.
Okay, was, the motion was seconded, eliminate one parent liaison position, seconded by Ms. Fattakanti. Any debate, discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mia Carfield?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Ms. Fattakante?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Ms. Dougherty?
If I could just comment on that, that, that's a difficult cut, because that parent liaison is the English language learner parent liaison, so you've got a multilingual person to do outreach to parents, that we've just eliminated that position. I think we're going to feel that at the high school. I would move to eliminate two custodian positions at the high school.
Do I hear a second?
You know what, Your Honor? We, before we eliminated those positions, I'm so sorry, Ms. Dougherty, may I interject? I'm, I'd like to give our unions a last-ditch chance to come before the, the committee with any proposed options that they might bring forward to eliminate some dollars in their own ranks. So, I'd like to, and, and we, we have to cut a lot of money out, I agree, but maybe they may come forward with some cuts, and, so, I'd like to see if we can hold off on that. I'd like to see if we can hold off on that, Your Honor, thank you.
Does anyone second that motion?
I would second that.
Seconded by Ms. Martin. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries. Next, next cut.
It would be, the, the clerk and the student support would be the net, but that would be in, within the custodians. I believe the clerks, I believe the clerk, with the security guards are part of the custodial unit, and the clerks have their own unit, so I would like to hear from them before I, because I think that they, they probably look like they would come forward with something, and I'd like to give them an opportunity for them to make the decision, rather than us to make the decision, Your Honor.
Seconded by Ms. Martin, to delay that, or?
Well, I just have concerns about that specific one.
Tell me.
If the clerks would like to speak now?
Okay, I'm sorry, this evening, I had received a phone call from our negotiating attorney, who had spoken to Jim Hall yesterday. And on Monday, we had a meeting with all the secretaries, and we did give a written thing tonight. It wasn't a legal one, because we didn't get anything in writing from you guys, so it was like a phone call from the attorneys to attorneys that they were supposed to pass on. And what, the clerks right now, as a goodwill gesture, we would like to go back and give you back five days, instead of going back 10 additional days, to go back five days the way it had been in the past. And that would be a savings of twenty-three thousand, one hundred and thirty-four dollars and eighty-five cents, along with the 12-month clerks would then continue their summer hours for that week, and go back to regular, working the regular hours once school, we're back into session, which the way it has been in the past. And the 12-month clerks also said that they would forego the Fourth of July holiday pay while being giving, given July 3rd off as a compensation. And that would be a savings of seven thousand, three hundred and fourteen dollars and fifty-one cents. And that would be a total right now of thirty thousand, four hundred and forty-nine dollars and thirty-six cents from the clerical unit at this point. We also look to meet and negotiate further and do language with the contract, and, you know, that was a goodwill gesture for now. And our main concern is saving the secretarial positions, again, with the continued cuts from the bottom half of the people that do all the footwork, the legwork, for all the administrators, and our positions that continually get cut, and then are not replaced, even at the, at the rate that those positions were eliminated due through any kind of retirement, the money seems to always manage to go to managerial positions. And we would just like to address those issues further, not, you know, right now, but our, right now, we would like to give back thirty thousand, four hundred and forty-nine dollars and thirty-six cents to the school department.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, Your Honor, I have to say thank you to the clerks' union, because they have been the first union that has come forward.
That's right.
Stepped up to the plate, and I, I recognize the difficulty, because they're, they're people who are not making a tremendous amount of money, so I recognize the difficulty, and I appreciate them for coming forward.
So we're still going to delay that?
Yes. I, I think that we need to look at it as a group, about what that means for us.
Did someone second that, the request that delay?
Thank you.
Mr. Leary? All in favor of the delay, it's signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the delay stands. We have a long way to go. What's that?
Could we get a total?
Total, Mr. Lang?
Yep, right now, you're at a million, two oh eight, oh oh five.
Does that, and that includes insurance?
Includes benefits, yeah.
And one, one other question, how late do you want to go, till 10 o'clock?
Yeah, no, leave it in that.
It's up to you. Huh? 10 o'clock, will recess?
10 o'clock rule, 10 o'clock rule.
Resess.
Yes.
Okay. We're at a million, two oh eight. Mr. Lang?
Sure. The next two positions, the video production coordinator position, and the TV studio videographer position, I would make a motion to, to table those for now, to, in the hopes that more money would come in, we wouldn't have to make those cuts.
Seconded by?
No, well.
I'll second that.
And here's my discussion on that. I don't, I want to take those off the table completely. Here's my concern, Your Honor, about those positions. I need to understand what they do, and I think that that was one of the things that we had asked Mr. Samaras to come forward and explain to us, because one of the things that I, that has come to my attention, is that the elimination of those positions means that that academy goes away.
Right.
So, I'm not willing to make that academy go away.
So I would mend the emotion.
So, 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 so I, so I would like to maintain those two positions, because my concern is if those two people go, they're the backbone of that academy, then that whole academy goes away. So that's, that's, that's my concern with eliminating those positions, because there's only five people, I think, four people in the whole department. So you eliminate two, and, and so there goes the morning news, and all the student-run productions, and, and, and football games. I mean, and those things might not be important to parents, but they're really important to kids. And, and they produce those shows themselves, with the help of those people. So I'm, I'm really, I, I understand where Mr. Leahy's coming from, but I don't even want to table them, because in my opinion, I don't even want to look at them at all.
You want to restore them?
Want to restore them.
Mr. Samaras, you have something?
No, just for clarification, this has nothing to do with the academies. The academies would not go away, the Communication Academy. And I was not asked for a report regarding those positions. They were included in my budget, and at some point, if it's tabled, I'd be glad to explain what we'll do to make sure all of these things happen. But I just want to make sure that everybody's aware, this has nothing to do with the academy, the academy would not close down. I know that's a concern of everybody.
Ms. Dougherty, on the?
Yes, I'd like to second my colleague's motion about restoring those positions, and add my perspective on it, in addition to the district-wide support that they provide in terms of our knowledgeable, the shows that happen across the city, the citywide parent council, it's a million-dollar facility that I believe is underutilized. I'd like to see some real work with the high school in terms of looking at how to get more students involved in the academy, and that's not going to happen by reducing the staff 50 percent. I believe, even a year ago, there were five people in that TV studio. We, you know, this is like one of the crowning jewels of Lowell High, that we have this fantastic TV studio, and shame on us that we're not doing a better job of using it. But I certainly would not want to close that door and lock the, you know, it just doesn't make sense.
And I must say, any major media from Boston could go in there and do it, the TV news, it's an excellent facility, and I agree that.
So I've seconded her motion.
That was named after a wonderful athlete.
Correct.
And a student at Lowell High School, Colleen Krieger.
But there's no intent to close that down.
We have a motion to restore those two positions, seconded by Ms. Dougherty, on the motion.
Thank you, Mayor, and I agree with both my colleagues. I think if, I don't know if it's in our preview, but I think part of the problem is, is that one of the positions actually gets a review from the Assistant Superintendent of Deputy Superintendent of Curriculum. If we could realign those positions, so it's not actually in the high school, in particular, the video production coordinator position, it's in the high school budget, but it reports to the director, the deputy superintendent. So it almost makes sense if we, if you're going to, and I would agree, I would, I would take that position and really move it over into the central office position, because it is middle school and elementary school, et cetera. Thank you.
Any discussion, debate, roll call.
So to restore would be a yes.
What's that?
To restore, Your Honor, would be a yes.
Would be a yes, yes.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mia Carfield?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Ms. Fattakante?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Next, anyone next who'd like to make some cuts? Ms. Martin?
Could I ask a question while we have Mr. Samaras here? The impact with these guidance council positions, I mean, I'll, just to preface this a little bit, my concern at the freshman academy is that we've seen real success there, and my understanding is that a big part of that has been these kind of wraparound services that we've been able to offer our students. But I don't know, as you look at this instructional specialist position, and then particularly the college counselor, guidance council position, just kind of some impact statements, so that we can have a better idea on that.
We're at the point, I know we've gone through some difficult points, and you restored some teachers, what have you, I'm not against anything that's been restored, I'm, I'm for it, you realize that. But, you know, we try to make the best cuts that we possibly can. But if we go into this level here, we're severely impacting the high school at this particular time. And the thing is, there's nothing on this page that I really want cut, at this point, because the, the guidance council, the freshman academy, they service the students at the academy. The college counselor, that services the entire school, parents get more information regarding, you know, college applications, funding sources, they run about 15 meetings a, a year at nighttime, so it's a very valuable point. The instructional specialists, with 33 days of MCAS testing, with the various, all the new teachers that we have at the high school, the need for support, these are all direct support positions. They're Unit B positions, but they directly impact on students' lives and teachers' lives. And they're not supervisory in nature, but they're support in nature, and they support students, including the student service specialists. I mean, they, I need them.
Ms. Fattakanti, and then Ms. Dougherty.
Thank you, Your Honor. Through you, Your Honor, to Mr. Samaras, how many guidance counselors are at the freshman academy?
Four.
There are four.
Correct.
So, how about if we, I'm going to make a negotiation here, we eliminate one.
I'm just, I'd just like to say, I'd like, I understand where you're coming from, and I appreciate that, but I'd like to stand pat at this point.
And you can, because you're not sitting on this side of the railing.
I understand clearly.
Ms. Dougherty, and then the superintendent.
Your Honor, I'd just like to make a point regarding the guidance counselors. We just went through a very difficult series of cuts regarding teachers. Nobody's happy to cut teachers. And we're looking at a class size of 21 students per teacher. We've got guidance counselors, four at the freshman academy, where we've seen tremendous, tremendous success in attendance improvement, and, and course passing, and reduction in dropout rate. Guidance counselors, four, for I believe 800 students in the freshman academy, is that right?
Eight twenty-five.
All right, eight twenty-five. And from the talk we had at the high, high school subcommittee in the beginning of the year, it's going to be more than that. So we have a student-to-guidance counselor ratio of one guidance counselor per 200 students. I could not in good conscience cut even one position. The headmaster is telling us very clearly these positions are important, we've seen great success at the freshman academy, I do not think we want to mess with that structure that we have in place. I would firmly, stridently plead with my colleagues to not go into these level of cuts at the high school.
Madam Superintendent, then Mr. Conway.
Just to follow up on Ms. Martin's request for an impact statement, the freshman academy cuts, although some of them were on the third tier or fourth tier of the original 7.5 million dollars with the cuts that were brought forward to the committee, were left off, in particular, because of the reasons Ms. Dougherty just mentioned, and to address Mr. Samaras's opening comments. We have had measurable success that is being acknowledged by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education with regards to our dropout rate. I recently received a call from one of the board members from the Department of Education, and they suggested that we have and host one of the future of board meetings for the department to come here to tell the story of the freshman academy, and the efforts that have been made there to address the fact that, it is my understanding, as Mr. Samaras just said, that we now have the lowest dropout rate of urban high schools. Anne Murphy and her team have been a part of that team statewide all year, sharing the various initiatives that we have taken here. So I think that's a pretty compelling impact statement. With that said, we all know the task in front of us, and there's no good cut that's to be made. I would ask the committee to perhaps consider, as you have with the other unions, where you've looked at the clerks, to put, to allow them to come forward, perhaps this would be an area that you may consider asking the Unit B people to come forward with suggestions. That's just a suggestion.
Mr. Conway?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I think if you take a look at the freshman academy, there's no doubt, there's no doubt about it that we've made incredible strides. I, I think I was fortunate enough or unfortunate to be, I believe, the, the individual that took on the all ninth grade myself, and in those days, there were 1,200 students, and I think we had two guidance counselors for 1,200 students, and, and one secretary, and matter of fact, she's, she's still here, and she's still talking to me. And it was very difficult, and I think that there is no doubt that you needed more resources. I'm, I'm glad to see that we have a 200 to 1 ratio of guidance counselors, excuse I'm, I'm glad to see that we have a 200 to 1 ratio of guidance counselors, excuse me, of students to guidance counselor. What is the ratio in the House offices that guidance counselors deal with sophomores, juniors, seniors, and, and obviously get a tremendous amount of information ready for the, for the seniors, and getting them ready for college? What would the ratio be in the House office?
That's the design between 275 and 315, on an average.
So, so the House office now have only about 550, 575 students?
They're running close to 600, 575, 600 at this point.
But, as you know, Mr. Conway, with the trans, transgency, the numbers will go from 275 to 315, 325, 350, in the past.
Ms. Fattacante?
Thank you, Your Honor. Every cut that we make is difficult. And I, I, I think we all share the same burden as we sit here. But I think that we also recognize that, as you indicated, our cuts have to come from someplace. So I'm trying to make a negotiation here by saying, we will only cut one of those guidance counselors at the freshman academy. That still leaves a very good student to guidance counselor ratio. Is it the optimum ratio? Absolutely not. But it is better than the ratio that we have at the high school.
Anyone second that motion?
I'll second.
Mr. Conway, you're seconding the motion. Any discussion on the motion? Ms. Martin?
Could I ask my colleague, just trying to look at this a little more holistically, like this whole packet that we're looking at right here? You know, I, I share the concerns about reducing the, the guidance counselors at the, at the freshman academy, but again, recognizing the situation that we're in, I, I would be willing to support if we went through and said, eliminating one guidance counselor at the freshman academy, recognizing that we're going to leave that second position there. Also, the student services specialist, that would also remain in place. And then perhaps we could look at the, the second three that are at the high school proper as a package.
Ms. Martin, which would be the instructional special, special, la, la, la?
That one.
Yeah, that one. The instructional specialist and the college counselor?
Yes, exactly. I'm sorry, yes, exactly.
Your Honor, I could, I, I could, I could vote for that.
Ms. Martin, present that motion one, one more time, please.
So that we'd eliminate one guidance counselor position at the freshman academy, and retain the second guidance counselor position, the student services specialist position at the freshman academy, and then, I guess we'll look at the next two together.
We will eliminate the instructional specialist and the guidance counselor position, college counselor.
And that motion was seconded by Ms. Fattacante?
Yes.
Actually, I would.
Ms. Dougherty?
To eliminate, yes, Mr. Samaras.
I, I actually didn't, I had just done the first three altogether, I'm sorry, I wasn't ready to talk about the other two.
Up as a package, so we would eliminate one of the freshmen, and the instructional specialist, plus the guidance counselor, college counselor. I thought that was, that's what you were discussing.
I'm sorry, then I misspoke, because what I was, I was hoping to look at the freshman academy, and then look at the high school proper, as two separate things here. But, so if we wanted to move forward with the freshman academy move, what I would say is, eliminate that one guidance counselor position, and retain the other two positions. That, let's do that as the motion.
Eliminate the one guidance.
Exactly.
So you're gonna amend your motion?
So you're back to my original motion, which is just to eliminate the one guidance counselor. Okay.
And the motion was seconded by you, Ms. Fattacante?
Yeah. Okay, so the motion is amended. You want to retain, cut one guidance counselor, and retain the instructional specialist, and the guidance counselor for the college, okay.
The guidance counselor at the freshman academy, is that?
Yeah.
Ms. Dougherty?
Your Honor, please, I, I could not support this move. And I would ask my colleagues to give the same benefit that they did to the clerks' union, to ask, we know when we met last week with Unit B, they seemed very open to discussing concessions. I would not want to make even one cut from this tier, without at least giving them the same courtesy that we gave the other unions to come back. We did it with the custodians, I believe, we've, we've held them off too. I mean, we're talking about our ninth graders, where we have seen tremendous, tremendous progress. I could not make even one cut here, at this time. When we have made those, we've delayed and deferred those other decisions for custodians and clerks, and we can't do it with Unit B, I don't understand why we wouldn't. And I would ask my colleagues to please vote no on this motion, and at least defer this decision until we get more information. I believe that this is a radically wrong move for the high school. I, I completely, wholeheartedly think we need to be very careful about breaking apart the structure we've put in at the freshman academy. We've heard from the superintendent, we're getting statewide notice on the success. We are leading large urban school districts in reducing our dropout rate, improving our attendance, improving our pass rate. These ninth graders are the ones that we, we've got, they're the most delicate time, we've got to transition them into the high school. And to start making these cuts without giving the same time that we gave to the other unions, I think is, it's a wrong move. I, I urge you to please wait on this one.
I just want to, before we take a roll call, vote on that. We've cut $1,208,000, is that so, Mr. Lang? Approximately? We have $1,329,199 to go, just to reach Mr. Samaras' request of $2,537,000. None of these cuts are easy. They're not for me.
Yes, but we've got our two leading, our headmaster and our superintendent advising us that these cuts do not make sense. So why would we go ahead and start picking and making cuts? Do we not value and trust the expertise that we've hired to lead our school system? Mr. Samaras was very clear, these cuts are not on his top list, even his top 10. He doesn't recommend making them. As difficult it is to see us reduce his teaching staff, he recognizes the structure and the integrity of the program we have at the freshman academy. I urge you not to just blindly start making cuts. I don't think it makes sense.
Ms. Martin?
I don't think anyone is responding to these things blindly. I appreciate your passion, and I appreciate the way you're defending this, but in all honesty, we, we are in a situation where we need to make these decisions. I have sat in meetings, and I have said, please, I have begged, union representatives to give us information, to give us what they wanted, what they thought they could concede, so that we would not be in what situation? This exact situation. As we sit here, without information, having to make cuts that are absolutely devastating and going to destroy what has been built, not just at the freshman academy, throughout the high school, throughout our district. We have no information. When we look at how we're gonna make these decisions, again, I don't know how we could be more clear in communicating the destructive nature of what we're doing, we all recognize it. I don't know how we could be more clear in asking for information to help us make these decisions in a better way. And I don't know how we could be more clear in communicating to people, to everyone part of this district, watching this district, how absolutely dire our situation is. I understand that people don't want to make commitments until they see the, until they see the, the money, until they, what a bad Tom Cruise reference, but we are not in a position where we can show people the money. We are not going to have numbers from the state legislature until it's too late. And that is the situation we all find ourselves in. And I just think that, I mean, I wish I had more time. I really do. I wish we had started this process, I wish we were getting better information. I don't fault anyone for it, but it's just the nature of the beast that we find ourselves in. We have asked for help, and, and I hope it will be coming, but I can't, in good conscience, if we want to start talking consciences, I can't in good conscience put this out anymore. I mean, having asked for it and not received it, we can't count on it. And that's, and, and I think that it is extremely, you know, challenging for all of us, and it's, again, not a situation where I'm faulting anyone, you know, for, for any of this. It is a situation that is not of any of our making, and yet it is incumbent upon all of us to fix it.
Mr. Leary?
Ms. Dougherty, I, I agree with her comments regarding these positions and how important they are, but I think also to, to put forward, voting on this tonight doesn't mean at the end of the next meeting that we have that we can't go back and rescind it. In every position, in every single one, when, when we get that, and you're right, I think surgically, I think that kind of went out of the barn a little bit. That's just my opinion, and it's not disrespectful, because this is, it's like making sausage, essentially, it's very difficult. But if they do come to the table with money, then we can always restore that. Or, if there's another cut down the road that makes more sense, and we can articulate that and add that back in, we can at that point in time. So at this point, I'm gonna support it, however, being fully cognizant of the fact that this is on my radar to put back in, because I think it does have that high value. Thank you.
Ms. Dougherty?
I, I don't want to belabor the point, I'm just gonna ask my colleagues this question. If you were willing to defer for the other unions, why are we not willing to defer to this one?
Just one comment before I ask for a roll call. Every community, like Lowell, is going through the same dilemma. We don't have the facts, the figures, from Beacon Hill. We have to have a balanced budget by July 1st. We're going through this budget to try to create a foundation of where we're going. And it's too bad we didn't support Mr. Samaras' budget in the first place, we would have been, I think, ahead of the game. But, we've been at this since 7 o'clock, we've cut 1.0, how much was that, Jade? One, $1,208,000. We have another $1,003 to go. And I understand the pain we're going through, but you're, you're not gonna just have a magic wand and make this go away. You're just not. Roll call.
Okay, on the amendment, okay?
On the motion as amended?
As amended.
And let's be clear about what that is.
Okay. You're gonna cut one guidance counselor, and you're gonna retain the student service specialist and the guidance counselor position, the college counselor.
No, that's not, you know what, let's make it easy.
Is that the motion again?
That's, that was not the motion, Your Honor, but let's just make it easy. And let's just eliminate the one freshman academy guidance counselor position. Is that good for everybody?
That's the main motion.
That's, that's the main motion, that was my original motion, Your Honor.
Seconded by Ms. Martin? Okay, roll call.
Mr. Lahey?
No.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Carfield?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
No.
Ms. Fattacante?
Yes.
Five ayes, two nays, passes.
The wish of the body to continue, or the wish of the body to recess? Okay. Your Honor, with all due respect, I'm gonna make a motion to recess.
Motion by Ms. Fattacante to recess, six budget deliberations, seconded by Ms. Martin. All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Second, Your Honor, when are we gonna meet again, actually? Because there's some confusion, I thought it was tomorrow night we were scheduled, but someone told me we weren't scheduled for tomorrow night. When are we, we gotta, we should set some dates, because we got to the 15th.
We could, we could look at Saturday, or we could look at next Wednesday.
Yeah, there's nothing posted as of this point, this was the last.
I'm open Saturday, unfortunately, but so, we can do it Saturday.
You're not here Saturday? Is that why you said let's do it Saturday?
No, definitely, unfortunately, I will be here Saturday.
So let's, how about if we do it Wednesday, at our regularly scheduled meeting, Your Honor?
Wednesday at 5:00?
Oh, can't do it, Your Honor, some of us work, full-time, and we're at work at 5:00.
School committee meeting at 7:00, don't we?
Yes. And there's a school committee meeting at 7:00, so if we all agree to keep the agenda very light.
After the school committee meeting?
We'll have that, we'll have it directly after the school committee meeting. So let's say about 8:00, we will keep the school committee agenda very light, and, and we'll continue this right after the school committee meeting.
Before we adjourn, I want to thank everyone for being here this evening, and we're really happy that you were here, and watching this debate in this, on the council floor. Before we adjourn, Jade, you, you don't have a problem with my request, do you? Yeah, I'll give it to you right here. That request I gave you earlier.
No, this is from earlier, right?
What's that?
This was from earlier, right?
Yeah, right, right. Motion to recess by Ms. Fattacante, seconded by Mr. Leary. All in favor? Signify by saying aye.[1733.12]